Welcome to the City Council's July 16th Special City Council Meeting. This is a teleconference meeting with City Council, city staff, and members of the public participating remotely to ensure proper social distancing in this federal, state, and local emergency. I would like to introduce staff and city council members present. Vice Mayor Drew Combs, Councilmember Betsy Nash, and Councilmember Ray Mueller. Councilmember Kat Carlton is out today. The staff present is City Manager Starla Jerome Robinson, our interim City Attorney Kara Silver, and our City Clerk Judy Heron. Ms. Heron, would you please provide instructions to the City Council members and to the public on how this meeting will proceed?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor, and members of the City Council. And again, welcome everyone to our July 16th special meeting. For members of the public who wish to speak on an item during public comment, after the mayor calls for it, I ask that you engage that hand feature in the top right side of your screen. That will alert us that you have a public comment. I will have the opportunity to open up your microphone, and you can then address the City Council with your public comment. For members of the City Council, we ask that you remain on screen as well as engaging your own webcams and microphones. Staff will engage their webcams and microphones to make presentations as well as address any questions that the City Council may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. The first item on our agenda is the study session. Study sessions are an opportunity for city staff to introduce an item that will require policy direction from the City Council in the near future. City staff will provide a brief presentation. I will then call for public comment. After public comment, the City Council will discuss the matter interactively with staff. The City Council will not take an action on these items addressed in the study session. The City Council may provide direction to staff for preparation of additional analysis or information necessary when the item returns to the City Council for action. For this item, the Transportation Management Association models for further study. To introduce this item is our Transportation Demand Management Coordinator Nicholas Yi and our Stairs Group Principal Consultant Julia Wien.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, just give me one quick sec. Let me just pull up the presentation. Okay. Good evening, Mayor Taylor, council members. My name is Nicholas Yi. I am the City's Transportation Demand Management Coordinator here tonight with Julia Wien from Stair Group to keep your presentation as an update to a presentation we actually gave about five months ago in February as an update to the Transportation Management Association Feasibility Study, or TMA. So we'll just be going through a few options tonight, looking for some guidance on which options you would like to narrow down to, to kind of proceed in the process to actually get a little more movement. And also, as a side note to just to introduce it, that we'll also be asking, or I'll be asking for some guidance on if we want to proceed with a sort of related possible grant application with some partner cities, which will be part of the presentation. So we'll just get to it. So let me pull up the screen. Just give me one sec. Can you see the screen of the presentation?
Yes, we can. Thanks, Nick.
Okay, cool. Sorry, still limited to this. All right, so let me just pull it up in full screen mode. And then, yeah, so I'll let Julia take over from here.
Great. Thank you, Nick. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, wonderful. And thank you very much for allowing us to join you today. As Nick mentioned, I'm going to give a brief update on where we are in the project, and then we'll be asking for your thoughts on some direction moving forward, and we'll provide you with some time to ask questions at the end if you'd like to as well. And so, next slide, please, Nick. Great. And so just to bring us back a step, since it's probably been a little while since you've heard about this project, and the city is interested in developing a Transportation Management Association. So this is an organization that will support employers in encouraging multimodal travel to help reduce congestion and support air quality improvement. We are completing this project to understand who the TMA should serve, what its function should be, and how it should be funded. Before I dive into this further, I wanted to just mention, in addition to the acronym TMA, standing for Transportation Management Association, you'll also probably hear the acronym TDM, which stands for Transportation Demand Management. And TDM refers to strategies that are aimed at getting individuals to travel through alternative modes, so non-drive-alone trips. So generally, a TMA will be the one that's delivering TDM services. So now that we have that all down, we can just dive into the project and backtracking really quickly to our first stage of the project, which was really trying to understand more about how TDM is implemented in Menlo Park right now, today, or pre-COVID, I would say. So how, and when, and where current commuters are traveling, and also how employers might respond to or find use in a TMA. So back in early February, we finalized our existing conditions report, and this was a culmination of stakeholder outreach and origin destination travel data analysis. So we spoke with employers and developers, also the Chamber of Commerce, and we analyzed four major zones, which are up on the screen, for travel data, really understanding when and where and how people are traveling within the city. So you can go to the next slide, Nick. Great. So based on that information, our next task is to choose two TMA model options to study further. So the rest of this presentation is going to dive into the models that we're choosing from, in the hopes that council can give us direction of two models to really do kind of a deeper dive into. So the five models we have up on the screen are the models that the city has selected originally for us to start looking into. First being status quo, which includes no development of a TMA, but continuation of some of the TDM that's going on in the city right now. There are programs that are being implemented by employers, and also some TDM requirements that the city has on certain developments in certain areas of the city. The next one over is a regional or a subregional TMA. So this involves joining forces with some of the neighboring cities to address TDM on more of a regional basis. Some of you may be familiar with the Manzanita Talks discussions. So they've developed a nonprofit organization kind of out of those talks called Manzanita Works. So this model likely involves becoming involved with that organization, though as we're in rather uncertain times right now, if that organization does not continue, it would be continuing to work with other cities to explore different regional options. The last three are relatively straightforward. Large employer TMA model would focus on large employers. The small employer TMA model would focus on smaller employers, and there are kind of benefits and drawbacks to each, which we'll get into in a few minutes. And then the citywide TMA would focus on all of the city. Then can go to the next slide, please. All right. So in order to evaluate each of these options, we developed a framework to help us understand the estimated impact and estimated cost over the current baseline, over what's going on right now. And we also looked more qualitatively into how each of these options aligned with some broader city goals. So we've developed, in these three categories, factors for both impact and cost. So for impact, we looked at four things. We looked at the number of employees who would likely be engaged, so that's individuals, the number of stakeholders that would likely be engaged, so that's employers or organizations, not necessarily number of people. We looked at mode share, which is the likelihood of reducing the percentage of the engaged population that drives alone. So it's a, you know, percentage of drivers within a total pool of everyone else who's traveling through a variety of modes. And then lastly, we looked at vehicle miles traveled, which you'll hear me refer to as VMT, and that's the potential for reducing vehicle miles traveled. And lots of those predictions came from what we found in our travel data analysis. In terms of cost, we looked at three factors. The cost to start up a TMA, the cost to deliver the TMA long term. So generally, that has to do with how much administration might be involved in TMA operation. And then the membership potential, which is basically how much of the cost we can reasonably assume or think would be funded by members versus what might need to be subsidized by the city or through grants that may be less stable and more difficult to come by. All right, and we can go to the next slide, Nick. And this is just a really quick example of how we compared the four options, and I'm not going to spend much time on this right now because we're going to come back to it, but I wanted to give you an idea of just what this process looked like a little bit. We can go to the next slide, and I'm going to run through each of the four nonbaseline model options. In the interest of time, I'm not going to spend too much time on them. I believe that you were sent to this presentation, so there may be more information that I won't touch on in my presentation, but please feel free to ask questions about it if you do have them. So getting started with the regional or the subregional TMA model, when looking at the impact factors, we expect that this model will have the ability to impact longer trips because it will be engaging with residents and employees beyond just the Menlo Park area. So we anticipate that it'll have a higher impact on VMT reduction. On the flip side, though, what we know so far about the Manzanita Talks discussions is that the conversations so far have been led by some of the larger employers who already provide TDM programs to their employees. So because of this, we think that the impact on the mode share or the percentage of folks who are not driving alone would likely be smaller. We do think that this would give the city a great opportunity to engage with individual employees and stakeholders. However, we think that that opportunity would be lower in this model than it might be in others because there's not a direct focus on the city here. So staff managing a regional TMA may spend less time with Menlo Park employers and employees because they have to serve a larger area. In terms of cost, this option would likely be one of the cheapest. And again, just a reminder, higher scores mean better. And so while these look like high numbers, it's a score, it's not a cost estimate. So because the funding of a regional TMA would likely be split between Menlo Park and other cities, including their agencies potentially, we expect that this would be a cheaper model. We can move on to the next model, please. Thanks. So for a large employer TMA model, we see actually a similar trend in the VMT versus the mode share impact on the kind of diamond chart on the top right. And the reason for our designation of a low mode share impact score here is really similar to what I described in the regional model. Basically, the employers that we'd be engaging with for large employer TMA model often or generally are providing their own TDM services already. For VMT, we expect, again, a higher impact, and this is because, looking at our origin destination analysis, the trips that we're starting and ending in the Bayfront area, where many of the largest employers are located, generally constituted longer trips than we saw across the rest of the city. So we expect that the trips we'd be impacting are longer trips, and that leads to a higher VMT reduction impact score. This model does score a little bit higher than the regional model in terms of individual employee engagement, and that's because we expect a local focus will bring more direct resource to the large employers located in the city, and will just allow the TMA to engage with more people. In terms of cost, the large employer scored relatively high, again, meaning will likely be less expensive. And this is due to the fact that often there are fewer resources required to reach more people, when it can be done kind of across a few large sites, rather than needing to engage with lots of small sites. Additionally, larger employers are likely, or more likely, to have the budget to contribute to TMA operations than smaller ones would be. So this membership potential score is also higher. And then, switching to the next slide, please. The small employer model, on the other hand, the impact here looks pretty different than what we just saw in the large employer model. It likely will have a larger impact on mode share because some of the smaller employers that the TMA might be engaging with are employers who don't generally offer transportation benefits or TDM services to their employees currently, and so it would be a new service introduced to folks and could help them change their behavior. Many of these employers, though, are located in the downtown area, and kind of on the flip side to what I just mentioned, for the origin destination trends that we saw in the Bayfront area, the downtown area showed much shorter trips to and from the downtown zone during commute hours. So we expect that the trips we would influence, or the TMA would influence, would be shorter trips, and so the VMT score here is much lower. In terms of engagement, a small employer model would allow the city or the TMA to engage with a whole host of stakeholders, lots and lots of small employers, but through that, probably fewer employees, again, because more work is needed to reach all of them across multiple sites. And some of these differences really do make this model a little bit more costly. As I mentioned, you know, needing to engage with more sites directly requires more administration time, and then similarly, small businesses are less likely to have budget to support TMA membership, and so more of that might come either to fall into the city or be required to, you know, find alternative funding mechanisms. On the next slide, please. And the last model here is the citywide model. So in terms of impact, this kind of brings in the best of both worlds. It allows the TMA to spend time with large employers who have the high concentration of employees and employees that take longer trips, but it also allows the TMA to support the mode share shift of small employers, you know, particularly focusing on these small employers that are going to be more engaged, rather than spending a lot of administration time trying to pull out employers that maybe wouldn't be interested anyway. It's also a bit of a more flexible model generally, so it would be easier from this model for the TMA to serve residential developments, for example, or to coordinate with citywide programs like Saferids to school. As a result, though, we do expect that the citywide model would be a little bit more costly because it really would require more work to reach the different types of employers. Ideally, though, the model would potentially allow for a membership fee structure that would be developed either on a per-employee count or by square foot, which would help large employers subsidize the cost for smaller employers. So you'll see that the membership potential score here is still a two, which is relatively high. So you can go to the next slide, please, Nick. And this is back to this slide that I showed you just a few minutes ago, and really taking a look at the impact scores of the four models, we can see here that the citywide TMA does have kind of the broadest coverage. And then on the next slide, we've done something similar for cost, and again, just one more reminder that the high score is good rather than expensive here. So you'll see the regional or subregional model here is likely to be the least expensive for the city, where the small employer and the city TMA models are a little bit more expensive. And then on the next slide, we've kind of graphed this out for you so we can see kind of how they compare to each other. And on the top left here, you'll see the status quo model at kind of a zero in terms of impact. And again, that's because all of the impact we are evaluating is going to be on top of the current status quo, and then similarly, it scores kind of above the highest score that we allowed for cost because there would be no additional cost for the status quo model. So really pulling out here that the two models that seem to speak to us in the city the most right now are the regional model, which would likely be the least expensive and probably allow us to do some interesting things and make some interesting partnerships across the region, and the citywide TMA model, which we think would really be most impactful for the city. And we can go to the next slide here. This is further to some of the analysis we've done. You know, we'd be remiss if we presented this whole study without acknowledging the times we're in and how some of that will change transportation, how it will change TDM delivery, and our project in particular. So just a couple notes here about how the COVID-19 pandemic will impact a TMA. It'll likely impact travel demand in the long term. We know right now, everybody's working from home, but there will likely be longer term impacts to the way people travel. There may be more people working from home for a long time. On the flip side, there may be more people who are scared to take public transportation or other shared modes for a longer period of time. So it may mean that there is an increase in congestion throughout the region and in the city as well. It's really important for us to continue, as much as we can, to really evaluate data as it comes in, and as I'm sure you've focused on in all of your past council meetings, this is an evolving situation and something that we need to make sure as we continue on this project, we have our finger on the pulse. The other thing that it may impact in terms of a TMA and operating a TMA is frankly, budget. Lots of businesses in the private sector are struggling as well, and so folks may be less likely to be interested in prioritizing funding for something like this than they may have been six months ago. If you could go on to the next slide, please, Nick. And thinking through kind of how TDM and a TMA and our project can respond to some of this, I mentioned it's really important for us to continue to monitor this situation. Things are changing very quickly, and as they do, we want to make sure that our plans are flexible and can respond to that. So that means probably now kind of having follow-up conversations after we understand the models that we want to look into further, really working with the employers and with potential members to think through how this new landscape makes them think about TDM and transportation and a TMA, and within the context of the two models that we'd be studying. And then generally, long-term implications are likely going to have an impact in the way a TMA might operate. So really switching focuses, telework is obviously something that we're all very focused on right now. Telework has always been something that TMAs do and are focused on, but more recently, these types of organizations have really started to help members and agencies think through long-term planning and policies. We found in lots of places, folks were forced to really quickly bring everyone home and haven't quite figured out long-term how they want to bring everyone back. So that's something that a TMA can really help with in the long term, help make those changes with employers as they get ready to do that. An increased focus on creating shared mode capacity safely. So a TMA is not necessarily going to be providing transit or making transit safer, but focusing on encouraging transit when it's safe to use, making sure that policies surrounding cleanliness are being communicated to the public and to employees so that they really know enough to make their own informed decisions about how they should travel. Next is just an encouragement of active modes. So we've seen in lots of places throughout the country recently that folks are switching to biking and walking because they want to get outside, and so a TMA can really help make some of those changes permanent and advocate for folks to be able to use those modes safely as well. And then lastly, this is really a time for innovation in the transportation industry and the transportation demand management industry, where there are going to be lots of people who are no longer stuck in their habits, and we have the opportunity to really be able to influence that and try to make some of these changes long-term. So I'm actually going to pass back to Nick right now, who's going to talk a little bit about an innovative idea that the city has an opportunity to learn more about, and something that could potentially fall under the purview of a TMA if there is one created in the city. So thanks very much.
Thanks, Julia. Yeah, so I just want to sidetrack slightly because we were presented with a possible grant opportunity we could partner with. I know the timeline's a little condensed in a sense, but just wanted to bring it to you guys' attention to see if you want us to move forward this or not, and then if so, we could get it as a consent item on July 28th. But essentially, this could fit into the future TMA because we were presented with an opportunity to possibly create a pilot program for quote-unquote autonomous first and last mile vehicles in the city of Menlo Park. So basically, we were approached by a couple of organizations. One was Electricité des Français, or EDF, and Prospect Silicon Valley, or PSV, to partner on this pilot autonomous vehicle project/study. So essentially, they have reached out to us, the cities of East Palo Alto, Fremont, and they're both interested in partnering on a National Science Foundation grants. It's called the Smart Cities Grants. So essentially, it would offer $50,000 in round one for initial deployment of this project, and round two would offer $1 million for full deployment of the project. So essentially, why these are kind of cool and innovators is that they would offer first, I'm sorry, first and last mile solutions similar to bicycle share, you know, which we've been looking at for the last couple of years in the city of Menlo Park, but they could also be a future offering of a future TMA. So essentially, what makes these vehicles different are that they are equivalent, say, e-bikes, so they're electric tri- or quad cycles, so they would have three or four wheels, and they can still be using the bike lane. So what's really cool about these vehicles is that they're essentially autonomous when they're deployed and when they're returning to their yard in a sense. So say if you're a user and you wanted to summon one, all you would do is grab your smartphone, summon the vehicle, so it would come autonomously from the central yard, and then it would come to your location, you would take control, use it manually in a sense, and then once you're done, it would just go back to a central location. So what's great about this, that it's offering greater access to first and last mile vehicles compared to traditional docked ones like a bike share, and you can also centrally locate these vehicles. So what's great about that is that it'll offer greater accessibility, say, if you're in Sharon Heights where it's a little less dense, there's limited service with the San Trans 286 bus in the midday, and in general, it's just kind of far from the bus, so it offers greater connectivity, say, downtown, Caltrain, and just around the city. Conversely, you can also have more accessibility on the other side of town where there's fewer trans options, let alone in business parks, there are limited shuttle options, which may be limited to because of recent funding cuts and all that, and just to give gravity of the situation. And in general, I think one of the biggest concerns about bike share in the past is that there's a lot of concern about clutter on the streets, you know, bike share or bikes and e-scooters could just be kind of thrown everywhere, and that's a concern, while theoretically, we could possibly centrally locate these vehicles, say, in a parking lot, and that way, they would just be deployed only when needed, and then they can just kind of sit centrally in this lot, not cluttering the streets and the sidewalks. And in the full build-out, there would actually be a contentless charging system, which is actually really great because it would reduce the need for human intervention, which made these vehicles more autonomous than current options in a sense. So basically, this is a way to kind of event it up, or vet a system right now while we're still trying to look at future TMA. So theoretically, if we're able to partner on this program and go through with it, we can actually kind of see what comes out of it in the next couple of years, theoretically, if it's mature enough that by the time the TMA comes to be, that it could be a possible program of the TMA. So essentially, this is what PSV and EDF are looking for from the city. Essentially, they're looking mostly for staff time as the resources right now, so in the short and the long term, they just look for staff time to help coordinate the logistics in general between the project team and the community to be a liaison, and then in the long term, maybe they're looking for a little more, say, like some space for the vehicles and other logistical operation coordination type items. So if the City Council is interested in proceeding with this, we can return on July 28th for the consent item. So essentially, all they're looking for right now is just a letter of support from the city saying, or telling the National Science Foundation that they are able to commit these resources, which again, are mostly staff time and all that. So again, it's kind of a condensed timeline, apologies for that, but the first round of, or the first round of the grant application is due on August 3rd, so that's why we're looking to try and move it forward as fast as possible if you are interested in this. So that's kind of that piece right there, right there, and then just kind of wrap the entire presentation. So these are kind of the next steps and all that. So right now, we are kind of in between task two and task three for the TMA feasibility study, which is theoretically a year long study, just that we got put on hold for the last couple of months. So just to kind of recap, in task one, Steer was tasked with doing cost benefit analyses and service analyses. So they basically reached out to different businesses in the community and just try to get a sense of all the background information and all that's that's that would help lay groundwork for the future TMA. And then in task two, that's when they really delved into looking at different TMA models and structures. So that's the presentation that you have tonight with the four models that would be compared to the status quo. And as we move into task three, this is where we really get into the nitty gritty of two more models that would be compared to status quo, because then these would theoretically be vetted and detailed in the sense that you have a long term plan for implementing TMA when the time comes and that we wouldn't have to do this again in a sense. So kind of the next items or calls to action. So one is that are you interested as a council to potentially pursue this potential EDF/PSV partnership? And then two, based on the models you've seen tonight, which are you interested, most interested in pursuing? And at this time, staff is recommending that we actually pursue the citywide and the regional TMA options at this time. And that's our presentation. So if you have any questions, please feel free to let us know.
Thank you for the presentation. Are there any clarifying questions from the council? Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. Can you give us a better idea of what sort of staff resources are required for the pilot program? Because obviously, that's one of our greatest limitations at this point.
So realistically, be someone like myself that would just continue with the logistics with our partners, EDF and PSV, and then it'd just be mostly kind of coordination type logistics and just discussions about how to move the project forward and just kind of discussing like pros and cons as we go along, items like that.
So what percentage of time are we talking about of a FTE?
They're estimating just for the kind of ongoing logistics, maybe about like eight hours in general, because they want to have like eight one hour meetings and then a couple of community meetings that would be, you know, a couple hours each, and then any just kind of as needed logistics. So realistically, maybe no more than 20ish hours.
In what, 20ish hours total? Or 20ish hours per week or?
Sorry, 20ish hours for this round one deployment. So theoretically, that would be from about now until maybe early 2021, because it just depends on when we actually get the, if we were to get the grants, let alone actually the deployment of round one.
And I think you said there was $50,000 at this level. What is that to be used for?
It's just very high level deployment, like say, we can try to have one vehicle and we wouldn't have all the bells and whistles like the contactless charger yet, but just kind of gain the infrastructure setup and a way to actually be able to roll it out on a larger scale in round two.
And who does all the setup? I'm really trying to figure out what are the resources required, and there's money available, so I assume that's to cover some sort of expenses. And I'm trying to get a better picture of this. It sounds, I mean, it sounds cool, but what really is involved, given our very limited staffing and budget?
No, that's a fair question. So just to backtrack a little, so just kind of give you a better sense of things. So essentially, this is a research project, if that makes sense. So EDF and PSV would be kind of the lead researchers and trying to understand how this type of vehicle could actually work in real work conditions, but they need, you know, the cities to actually partner with to deploy the vehicles and have users. So realistically, they would be the ones leading the charge, and what they're needing from us is, like I said, staff time to help coordinate logistics, maybe some space here and there, but theoretically, at the end of the day, they're the ones that are kind of taking the lead on all of that. So it's not like there's a big financial commitment from us, per se, just more of staff time.
Councilmember Mueller, and I have a quick question, Mr. Yi. Can you put up the slide that you had up with the with the timeframe? This, the next steps? I think it was the previous slide.
This one or?
The one after it, I believe, or before it? Maybe it's before. That one, yes, thank you.
This one with the vehicles on it?
No, the next one. The next one. The ones that has the steps on it. There we go. Thank you, or the tasks. Thank you. Councilmember Mueller? Okay.
Was Manzanita Works notified of this meeting and invited to respond to the staff presentation?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Was Manzanita Works notified of this meeting and invited to respond to the staff presentation?
We did not reach out to them at this time. We're just trying to get a sense of, you know, moving this forward, but we were going to reach out to them to let them know what came out of this meeting.
All right, I just would comment, I think that's actually deficient. We had council members actually involved in the Manzanita Works project for a number of months with other electeds and management from other cities. So I appreciate the work that's been put into this, but I would have expected that they would have been invited to this meeting.
Okay, that's a, that's a really good point, and we can certainly follow up with them and bring thoughts back to this group too, if that's something that would be useful.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Combs and then Councilmember Nash.
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm with regards to this possible project, a research project of sort of a last mile alternative, is it the staff's recommendation that we engage in this, this project? Because obviously, I know the recommendation regarding the overall, you know, TMA Association motto, the two that you want to explore, but it wasn't 100% clear to me that you guys are also recommending that we engage in this, this sort of research project.
Yeah, I would say we recommended it because we don't have this kind of opportunity falling to our laps too often in a sense. So I know, like I said, we've been looking at bike share for the last couple of years, but the problem is that we would have to go all in in a sense, but the problem is that, you know, as the economy's, you know, gone bust in a sense, you know, personal preference for scooters kind of took over bikes, a lot of bike share in this, bike share systems on the peninsula we were looking at to kind of emulate got pulled out. So we kind of had to take a step back in a sense, but maybe this is a way to kind of have innovative new technologies in transportation to actually pursue, let alone there wouldn't be too many risks, per se, other than we would just be putting up staff time. It's not like we had to put a bigger financial commitment if we were to invest in a full system. Does that answer your question?
Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. So how does this, can you explain a little bit more how it works with the, in the bike lanes? How fast does it travel? Do we have adequate bike infrastructure at this point, or do we have to work on that? Or just a little bit more information there, please?
I don't know too much about the vehicles, per se, but I think they're rated or they top out speed wise to be actually legally allowed in the bike lanes. They're not too wide, so they actually do fill the bike lanes. But, you know, this is kind of a open ended question where maybe we do need more infrastructure on the streets and do we need, do we have something like, say, the slow streets projects that are happening in other cities, kind of be emulating Mellow Park to help add additional bike structure or bike infrastructure in the near term? It's a open ended question, but I mean, obviously, if you had more bike infrastructure, it would help that you can offer safer accommodations throughout the city for people who are varying skills levels.
And so essentially, this is to get it in and actually have people start using it? Or just sort of to bring, what's the first stage involved just really at a high level? What I'm wondering is, will residents be using it? How will that work? And is the city, I assume that the companies would cover any liability issues?
Yeah, I'm assuming that they would be on the hook for liability insurance and all that. But at the end of the day, the end goal is that we are actually getting this out to the users. So we want, we don't just want people like us that are the professionals trying this out. We want real users out there in the field. We want, you know, people that are commuting to work every day. We want people who, you know, are a little less able to use a bike, but maybe are able to use something electric. And that's another way to get around the city without having to actually use a car in this sense. So it's kind of taking bike share to the next level in the sense that it's somewhere in between bike share and a car share, so that way it's environmentally friendly, but also not too, it doesn't take up too much space and infrastructure, per se. And hopefully, the end goal is that people of all different ages and walks of life are able to try it out and actually use it so we can get better real world, real world data from this pilot.
And it's an electric vehicle?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Yi, I have a question. What's the speed limit of the bike lane?
I believe it's 20-ish miles, 25, I'm not too exactly sure, but I think that's where, at that point, you can't actually legally ride something that fast in a bike lane.
Okay. And then a part of the million dollars, if we got that far, would that include infrastructure improvements, or is that, that's money for the city to spend as they choose, or is it to actually purchase the vehicles?
It is a little of everything, and this is more on the infrastructure side. So it's not like the city has full reign of how to spend the money, but would be more talking with the partners to discuss what's the best way to actually implement the infrastructure in the cities. So as I was mentioning before, you would have, be able to buy more vehicles, let alone actually build up that contactless charging system, so that way we can kind of see it in its true form.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, I'm going to take public comment if there aren't any more clarifying questions from the council. No? Okay. Ms. Heron, do we have any public comment on this item?
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to speak on our current item, which is our study session D1, direction on the TMA, please engage that hand feature on the top right side of your screen. We'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone and you can address the city council. At this time, I do see a hand raised. Adina Levin, you're off mute and able to address the city council. Adina? Adina Levin? If you'd like to unmute yourself, you can address the city council.
Aha, sorry, I needed to push the button. Yes, so, uh, thank you very much. I'm glad to see even in this difficult COVID time for this study to come forward. So Adina Levin, I am on the Complete Streets Commission, but speaking for myself on this item. And I think in terms of the staff recommendation, the, I think that that is good, given the climate action plan and the goal of reducing vehicle miles traveled. I think having this as a strategy for the city makes good sense. I support the staff recommendation in terms of the citywide, which gets the best of both worlds, and pursuing the regional approach. I would not suggest waiting for a regional approach because that is something that could potentially be complex and could take time to come to fruition and also, you know, phase itself in over a longer period of time. So I think that getting started with local activities and then adding regional as they develop would be a good strategy. And also, I think that the relationship building aspect of the local program would not be satisfied in like any short period of time at all with a regional program. So I agree with the staff reports, with the recommendations. The question that I have both about this and also about the pilot is the start time. So the staff recommendation was recommending a start time that is soon. And my question is, like, how does that relate to the really significant uncertainty about the speed at which a higher level of commuting will return? I think that in terms of work from home, I, like, my personal belief is that there will be some, you know, increased work from home in the future, but people's productivity is like not the same, and there are certain things that will, people are going to continue to work in offices. But given the fact that the timing is so uncertain, I am wondering whether it makes sense to go ahead quickly as recommended in the staff report or to do a little bit of delay until there's a little bit more certainty about companies' plans. And then I have the same, I have a question about timing about the pilot and when it will be deployed as it relates to when people will be out and about. So thank you for going ahead, and I hope that council approves the staff recommendation.
Thank you, Adina. So again, if any member of the public wishes to speak on our study session item D1 regarding direction on the TMA, please engage that hand feature on the top right side of your screen. It does look like we have one more hand raised. Chris Adair?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Got to answer the city councilman's question about the top speed of the vehicles. I'm from the traffic unit in the police department, and my understanding is that if an electric vehicle can only go a maximum of 20 miles per hour, that it can travel in the bike lane legally, but a higher speed electric vehicle that's able to go 28 miles an hour would not be legal unless there was a city ordinance in place to allow it. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. So this will be the last call for any hands raised regarding item D1, the study session to provide direction on the TMA. Seeing no further hands raised. Mayor Taylor, you may continue. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for the public comment. I have a couple of questions for, I'm not sure if it's for Steer or Mr. Yi, and I do appreciate Councilmember Mueller's comment about the Manzanita talks. I think that is important considering how much time went into it. There are some employees that are able to work from home, and there are some who are not. And so moving forward with the TMA, is there a way to prioritize those who can't work home, from home? I believe that the streetlight data can provide some information as far as how many people are traveling from point A, well, Mellow Park, to, say, South San Francisco for work. Is there a way to prioritize the essential service workers for the T, for this type of transportation as opposed to the way that it's been done, looking at large employers like Facebook or the Life Science District? Is that possible?
Julia, I still here just want to double check too.
Sure, I can, I can take a stab at that, Nick, and if you want to fill in after me if I forget anything. I think that's, and, and sorry, let me just share my webcam. I think that's a really interesting question. My only thought would be that it is a bit of a timing question. So certainly, a TMA can prioritize working with any types of employers, and we could set one up surrounding or prioritizing particular employers that have been sent back to work already. My only thought or concern around that is just that we do need to complete the rest of the study. And so, again, just thinking through what that timing would look like and who will be back to work in a few months. But that being said, I think certainly a citywide TMA option that's focusing on everybody could prioritize first folks who are going back to work. And even within that small and large employer option, the TMA can prioritize work plans for those who are traveling.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and just to add to.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, and just to add to that, I think it really comes down to the question of timing to answer both your question and this Levin's question, where we don't know what will happen in, you know, a few months from now, six months from now. But I guess all we can do is really just plan for both the quote-unquote old norm, but also the new norm, where we have different scenarios pop up where, you know, maybe we need to prioritize the essential worker first because realistically, the Facebook type worker is not going to return until, you know, 2021, 2022 at this rate. So how do you actually create the TMA, get it moving forward, but also maybe reprioritize who's the essential worker at that point? And get them mobilized first and then, you know, it could just be a phased implementation of the other programs, just rearranging the priorities at this point. And then kind of going to Ms. Levin's other question about the pilot project. So that is a major concern too about the speeds because we don't know if people are driving more now and are they really adhering to the speed limits? So realistically, from that question she had, we would not be having vehicles on the street until maybe early 2021, earliest at this point. So realistically, we could kind of assess the situation, gauge what's going on, and then actually react accordingly and then phase it in, in the best manner possible.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the council? Councilmember Nash?
If we don't do the pilot now, what opportunities will there be in the future to possibly join this at the next stage?
I'm not too sure of the exact details, but we might be able to join in round two. But then if we were able to just join right now in round one, it just shows that we're from the get-go. So it might be a stronger application. But realistically, just kind of gain our foot in the door. So later on, we can kind of figure out some of the logistics, but it's a matter of the opportunity is here now, but we not be able to get it back in the future if we just don't move forward now. So that's kind of a time history in a sense.
And when did you hear about this opportunity? Like, how much information have we received? I'm very concerned about the resources and just how we go about this, how we would actually incorporate that into our resourcing and how many people we have in the transportation department right now, which is obviously has fewer headcounts than it did a few months ago.
Yeah, so we were first approached about this in early June and then the original application deadline was July 1st. But that got pushed back, which was actually opportune for us because we wouldn't have been able to actually have, say, a letter of support without your consent. Because at the time, we were going through the budget crisis and the meeting. So this was kind of a back burner item. So we didn't want to bring it forth to council at that time because there are bigger fish to fry at the moment.
Councilmember Mueller?
Just want to clarify, since so with respect to Manzanita Works, so my understanding is the staff recommendation night is to pursue regional and city, not subregional, which would be Manzanita Works, right?
It's kind of interchangeable, regional, subregional. It means the same in a sense. So it's not excluding.
Okay.
Not excluding any type of Manzanita types.
All right. So you're not asking us to exclude them tonight?
No. So realistically, if we haven't said it, just to reiterate it, the subregional, regional, whatever you want to call it type model would kind of take us down to possible scenarios. We would either look at joining or creating a TMA first and then joining a federation type subregional TMA in the future. Or we could wait and then actually just join from the get-go as part of that bigger federation of TMAs or just one single organization. So it's not excluding anything, it's just kind of taking us down that path to see what possible options are to join the subregional level.
Right. That's good. That's an important clarification because I've always understood Manzanita to be subregional. So when I saw the staff recommendation, I thought you were excluding that process. And that's why I was disappointed they weren't here this evening. But now if you explained it and it's not, then my apologies for being as disappointed as I was. I actually, to my colleagues, am supportive of trying to see, I think, looking. So if we select the pilot tonight, we're going to have to, we say we want to move forward with that pilot tonight and that technology. Certainly there is going to be negotiation of indemnity agreements and all sorts of things. And we can, I'm assuming we can pull out if those agreements can't be reached. Is that accurate?
I'm assuming for the most part, yes. But technically tonight's is just to see if we want to move forward. So your formal consent would be at the next meeting.
Okay. So I'm comfortable with staff's recommendations this evening. So I, I think it's worth going ahead and pursuing that further. The biggest thing that we know about these TMAs is that even when we get them in place, that last mile is the most difficult. How we get people and I think that these, I am, I, I will be candid with you, Mr. Ye, that when we do, and it does come back to us, I am concerned about a driverless vehicle taking up space in a bike lane. Because as, you know, there's lots of accidents that often happen in bike lanes just between cyclists. So to have a vehicle that, I'm going to be very interested to hear how it adjusts to cyclists coming at it and whatnot. But, but I think there's enough there that's interesting to me that I'd say, yeah, I want that brought back. I very much want to move forward with the citywide and regional or subregional team back. So thank you. It was a very comprehensive report.
Councilmember Nash?
I'd like to hear from either Ms. Nagaya or Mr. Jerome Robinson about what resources, what we would not do if we went ahead with the pilot.
Well, I'll defer to Nikki and then follow up. Go ahead. Sorry about that. So working from home is always a challenge as well. So thank you, Councilmember Nash, councilmembers, for hearing the presentation tonight and all the thoughtful questions. I think the fundamental questions that you're raising are the same concerns that we had about the grant opportunity in terms of the, the resource constraints that we have on the, the transportation team as well as the, the operations of the vehicle. So we would, if we did move forward, we would want to explore all those operational questions in more detail before they're operating on the, the roads in the city. But with the resource questions, I think one of the challenges with, with the opportunities like this, and, and keeping in mind your conversation about the climate action plan and then the goals that you had on Tuesday, it's a very interesting, very innovative pilot that would be exciting, but that there's a lot of, of things we still need to explore. So I, I think from that context, we didn't want to turn it down outright without getting it in front of you. But I also don't want it to distract from the core conversation tonight, which was the, the TMA and how to move that forward. So if you're, you're concerned about the resources, we, we can absolutely decline the opportunity, continue to pursue the potential to, to join the partnership in phase two as they go forward. But, but again, just keeping in mind many of the goals that you've expressed about climate action and greenhouse gas reductions, we didn't want to let it pass by without at least briefing you on it quickly as part of the presentation tonight.
Great summary, Nikki. I really don't have anything to add to that. I, I think we do need to know from the council what your priority is. And that gives us a better opportunity to assess what the, what the person power will be required.
So Ms. Nagaya, what is your recommendation from the transportation department on this? Given everything that you've heard about priorities so far with this and presuming that we can't do everything, but it does sound like a really interesting opportunity.
So I think what, what we could do is follow up with the, the grantee partners and verify that we could join and, and then pull out for phase two if we're not able to continue to support a more robust effort that's needed in the future or if there are operational concerns that we have about the vehicles themselves. So given that the, the phase one time period is about six months and as Nick described earlier, we think it's roughly a 20-hour staff commitment of mostly his time. We think we can accommodate that, but the, the phase two piece, I think, is, is more of a concern going, going forward. So that 20 hours would let us investigate some of those questions. We could potentially start that work, but if it starts to be too much and we can confirm that we can remove ourselves from the application in phase two, that I think that would be a worthwhile effort to, to invest a little bit of upfront time to see where, where it could lead in the future.
And will there be more information available on the 28th when you were, if you were to bring it to council as a consent item?
Yes, we can, could do that.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, I'm, I'm supportive of the staff recommendation in general regarding the, the TMA of exploring the citywide and regional, subregional. And I'm also supportive of, you know, pursuing this, this possible pilot opportunity. It seems at this point it's sort of low risk to, to explore more and possibly something that could be, you know, you know, interesting and exciting. And so I'm supportive of staff continuing to explore, explore it as an option.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. I am in supportive of the staff recommendation for the, the TMA. I have some concerns about this, of the pilot. And so you'll have more information for us next Tuesday.
Yes. Is there anything else in particular that you would like answered other than what's been raised tonight?
Well, well, I'm. I, I share the same concerns as far as staff time. And this isn't, this isn't one of our priorities. That's the other piece, considering that we will be moving towards a, I believe it is a city council priorities just because of all the shifts with COVID. So this is an exciting piece. And I do thank Officer Adair for giving the information about the speed limit. I just, I have some concerns about it. So the more information that you have for next Tuesday, or not next Tuesday, for the 28th would be helpful. Are there any other clarifying questions or input from council on the study session?
Just I, I agree with the staff recommendations and everything that's been said as far as getting more information for the 28th, when the pilot project comes before us again.
Okay. I think we have concluded our study session and thank you again for the presentation. Ms., how do you pronounce your last name? Is it Wen or Weon?
Ween.
Ween. Thank you for the presentation, Ms. Ween, and thank you, Mr. Ye.
Thank you, councilmembers.
Thank you very much, councilmembers.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is our regular business. Under regular business, the city council considers recommendations from city staff on policy matters or administrative actions that require city council approval. Item F2 is continued from Tuesday. Add institutional bias reform as a top priority for city staff in 2020, 2021, and provide input to staff on how to address police. To introduce this item is our city manager, Ms. Starla Jerome Robinson.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. So the council asked us to work with the mayor and vice mayor to reframe the discussion or frame the discussion for tonight. And we're coming back with two key recommendations from a staff perspective. So I think the two key recommendations are that we focus on how we're going to run the police chief recruitment for the permanent chief and how we're going to work on our issues with institutional bias reform. So with respect, and I'd like to give you some thoughts on both of those. So with respect to the police chief recruitment, we need to understand what level of public participation is sought. Often in a recruitment, there's input at the beginning or there's input at the end or there's input at both the beginning and the end. And so how, how deep do we want to go into that community visioning process for a new police chief? We could, we could have community forums on the ideal candidate. We could have a panel of community members to provide input on the finalists. And then separately, does the city council want an external professional recruiter, which is normal and, and often used? And if so, what services should we ask the professional recruiter to provide? For example, would the recruiter conduct the community forums to define the ideal candidate? Would the recruiter conduct a multi-month open recruitment? And would it market the recruitment to candidates that the recruiter might be familiar with that would be ideal for our community? Thirdly, does the city council want to launch an organizational review and/or visioning process for public safety to inform the police chief recruitment? If yes, what is a reasonable timetable? And should the police chief recruitment run concurrently or after it's been completed? Sorry about that. So then secondly, to look at institutionalized bias reform steps that we can take. So the expectation, you know, we've recommended training and it would be helpful to hear from the council on your expectations of that training. For example, what's an acceptable timeframe for that training? And who should be required to take racial equity training or who, who should get to participate? For example, city council, commissions and committee chairs, city attorney's office, staff, executive and management teams, supervisors, contractors, et cetera. And I think that what we would propose is that there's a number of groups, but who should we prioritize? And then who would follow on after that? And are there other areas of bias training that are desired? Then secondly, what are the expectations of organizational analysis? For example, how do we prioritize our systems of analysis such as, do we look at the municipal code, city council policies and procedures, administrative policies and procedures regarding hiring, contractor selection, staff development, customer service? What's an acceptable timeframe for that project? And what's its priority relative to all other council priorities, work plan and customer service? So that's just a very quick, brief overview of some of the questions and steps that would be taken in both the police chief recruitment and then training on institutional bias reform. And I'm happy to answer any questions or provide additional guidance if that's useful.
Thank you for the presentation. Are there any follow-up questions? I have one question. Is it possible to change the name from institutional biases to advanced diversity, equity and inclusion? I don't know if any of the council members have any input or. Councilmember Nash?
I, I would support that change. Certainly.
I'll keep on the call you Starla. Mr. Jerome Robinson, you were going to say something in between my comment and, and Betsy supporting it. I just wanted to.
I, I think I just hiccuped that. Sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say, Nick has joined us.
Okay. Mr. Pigaros? You're on mute.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Nick Pigaros, Assistant City Manager. The, of course, council's direction on the, on the scope of this particular effort is, is up to, is at the council's discretion. The only thing that I would ask is that we have definitions. We heard last meeting and, and, and over the last several months, there is a question about what each word means. And, and the common vocabulary ensures that everyone is on the same page. So if there is, if there is an effort to, or if there's a desire by the council to identify specific areas other than bias, we would, it would be helpful to have. identify specific areas other than bias, we would, it would be helpful to have that conversation about what those words mean so we're all on the same page.
Thank you, Mr. Pigarros.
So do if there aren't any further questions, I'll leave, I'll turn it back over to the mayor to further the discussion. And if there is anything I can do to help, please let me know that.
I have a question before you before you go, and I am jumping around a little bit. Going back to the police chief recruitment and just the options that we have, what level of public participation? Does the council want to do an external professional recruitment? Does the council want to launch an organizational review? So the the organizational review would be specific to the police department or would that be the entire city staff?
So Madam Mayor, we have been doing organizational reviews by department. I think you'll recall that we not too long ago had the Public Works and Community Development Review presented to the city council. The last time we did the police organizational review was, I think, in 2012, 2013. So it's really we're ripe for another review. And so at this point, we would focus on the police department, both in terms of service issues or service matters and equity matters, but we would we would then further it through the order through our organization.
Okay, so it would be an internal organizational review.
Yes.
Okay.
No more questions? Thank you very much, and of course glad to answer questions later if that's helpful.
Okay, thank you. If there aren't any additional questions at this at this time from the council, I do plan on opening public comment. I had a few requests. So if we don't have any other questions amongst ourselves, I'm going to go ahead and open public comment. Ms. Heron, do we have anyone?
Thank you, thank you, my Taylor, members of the city council. Just so you know, all public comment that was received via web form is available on our agenda for your purview as well as members of the public. But for those members of the public who wish to speak on this item for public comment, please engage that hand feature in the top right side of your screen. I'll have the opportunity to open up your microphone and you can address the city council. And at this time, our first hand raised is Emily Fox. Emily, if you'd like to unmute yourself, you may address the city council at this time. Emily Fox. If you can unmute yourself, you can accept your public comment at this time. Okay, Emily, I will come back to you after our next public commenter, Karen Grove. Karen, you're off mute. If you'd like to unmute yourself, you may address the city council at this time.
Thank you. I would like to suggest or suggest and for everyone involved to evaluate. In choosing the police chief, you know, former police chief of East Palo Alto, Ron Davis, went on to lead the 21st century policing reform with something, some big thing. He was on a panel recently about policing and race and was extremely straightforward and bold and wise. So he just he's got an excellent reputation for a police chief. And he's the best police chief out there. There are some people who think we shouldn't have police. But if you're going to have police, he's a great example. So I'm wondering, particularly because he was in East Palo Alto and he knows the community, if he could be a resource in helping us move forward in selecting our next police chief. So that's the first thing. And then the other thing I wanted to say is, I I know I sound like a broken record, but the Government Alliance on Race and Equity, which the staff report mentions and proposes as a partner in moving forward to improve racial equity in Menlo Park, starts everything with definitions. And I would suggest that anyone who's interested, download some of their reports because they are there. They're very, very operational, operationalizable definitions. They lend themselves to metrics and evaluation and goal setting. That is what Gare is all about, is about setting a common vocabulary, understanding sort of the thousand whys that brought us to where we are. But more importantly, with that common vocabulary and common understanding, agreeing upon metrics and ways to achieve them. They're very operational focused. But they do take the time to establish a common language and common vocabulary. And it does take time because we all have a lot to learn. And so I just can't recommend that approach more strongly. I'm not a city staff administrator, so I can't speak from that point perspective, but I have studied racial equity quite a bit. And from that perspective, and someone in the philanthropic world, their approach is extremely effective. So I would and Race Forward is affiliated with them, so both organizations are mentioned in the staff report. And I want to thank you for for bringing those up, and I support that recommendation as a way forward. And they will guide us and help us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I'm going to be returning to Emily Fox. Emily, if you'd like to unmute yourself, you may address the city council at this time. Okay, Emily just sent a chat message. She's having some difficulty with her microphone. So Emily, if you would like to type your comment in the chat feature, I can make sure the city council does receive that. All right, and our next public commenter is Zervon Malouf. You are off mute and able to address the city council at this time. Zervon Malouf. Did you want to present your public comment to the city council at this time? You are off mute, it looks like. Okay, Zervon, I will come back to you. Our next public commenter is Norma R. Norma, if you'd like to unmute yourself, you may address the city council at this time.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, hi, it's me again. Thank you, council members, for continuing this much needed conversation on institutional bias reform, which should really be institutional racism reform. I think the point about having common terminology is well taken because naming that problem is so important. I want to start off with addressing the Facebook funds and why the point of needing more police for a high concentration in a certain area is a moot point. The logic behind the 2017 staff report and agreement for the creation of the BE4 Police relies on the assumption of an increased population stemming from the expansion of the Facebook campus. However, recently, as everyone might have heard by now, Facebook has stated that they hope to move towards having a higher remote workforce. I know that currently the Facebook policy only allows E5 engineers to work remotely permanently. But recent articles and statements from Mark Zuckerberg Zuckerberg himself, as well as the continuing pandemic, have pointed to an increase of the permanent workforce, remote workforce at Facebook. So a high concentration of officers is not needed in the Bell Haven area at all, especially when police protect a workforce that largely does not live in Menlo Park, while at the same time criminalizing the largely black and brown population that lives near Facebook campus. In this case, police are really being used as a tool for dentification. Instead, as I've mentioned before, I want to call on the police to explore reallocating the funds designated for safety from the BE4 Police to the Climate Action Plan or really anything else. I also really want to know why the council did not use the Facebook funds for air quality monitors. I asked that question before. There was an answer. And Mayor Taylor, you made a great point last Tuesday that our youth is watching us. So I wanted to ask our council members if you are doing all that you can do right now in this moment to build a more equitable and more life-affirming society for our youth? Or are you really just putting the needs of a corporation above your own constituents? I urge you to drastically decrease the police footprint and to truly listen to us. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. Our next public commenter is Tanz Carter. Tanz, if you'd like to unmute yourself, you may address the city council.
Well, good afternoon, good evening to you all. This is a great conversation. I am Tanz Carter. I am part of a group called NOBLE, which is the National Organization of Black Law Enforcement Executives. Zervon is our president, and I am the vice president. I saw that he was having difficulty, so I wanted to at least get our voice out there. NOBLE is actually a group that Ron Davis is a part of as well, and our motto is justice by action. What NOBLE does is address the critical issues germane to improving both the law enforcement profession and it serves to our service to our community. With NOBLE, we have actually looked at things like racial profiling, minority recruitment, hiring and promotion, law enforcement, ethics and integrity, and police accountability. So NOBLE is really a group about police accountability and police being transparent. And as you all look for your interim chief, I would really encourage you to look at NOBLE to help you and guide you on this quest because it's very important in this time that we have someone in there who understands the safety of the community as well as our officers. The NOBLE NOBLE really addresses 21st century policing and procedural justice. It's about giving the community a voice about being fair, about being impartial. And so this is some things that NOBLE is about. I believe that we sent a letter to you this evening, so hopefully you can read that. And if you have any questions, please let us know.
Thank you for your public comment. At this time, I would like to return to Zervon Malouf. You are off mute and able to address the city council at this time. Zervon, are you able to engage your microphone? Okay, I will come back. We did receive a written comment from Emily Fox, so at this time I will read that. My main concern is that even these very well-intentioned changes still continue to direct funding towards police when history shows us that reforms and bias trainings do not do much. I feel strongly that we need to be moving forward away from policing and towards things that are needed. For instance, there is a death of affordable housing and affordable mental health care. Again, I appreciate the efforts by the council, but I agree with the current public commenter. There is so much that is needed, and police are unable by design to meet those needs. So again, that came from Emily Fox. And our next public commenter will be Lynn Bramlett. Lynn, you are off mute and able to address the city council at this time. Lynn Bramlett. Would you like to provide your public comment at this time? Okay, Lynn, I will come back to you next. Our next public commenter is Chris Adair. Chris, you are off mute and able to address the city council at this time.
Good afternoon, city council. I wanted just to call in to add some reminders and some perspective about exactly what's going on in Menlo Park today and not just the entire world today. Over the last decade, the Menlo Park Police Department has utilized emerging technology, embraced transparency, and cultivated community cooperation to position itself as one of the leading law enforcement agencies in the San Mateo County. The department began audio recording their interactions with members of the community over 10 years ago and transitioned to body worn video cameras in 2013. In 2015, the department worked with the ACLU and the community members to address privacy concerns and develop a video destruction waiver, allowing members of the community to have their video contacts with employees of the police department deleted after one year. In 2016, the Menlo Park Police Department became the first San Mateo County law enforcement agency and one of only 52 police departments nationwide to join the Police Data Initiative. The Data Initiative was one of several recommendations and action items conceived by President Obama's Task Force on 21st Century Policing. Since joining the initiative, the department has continued to be a transparency pioneer by publicly publishing ongoing data sets about the department and its efforts in the community. Additionally, the department began agency-wide implementation of many other recommendations made by the Task Force Final Report. The department's ongoing community collaboration has resulted in several notable state, national and international policing recognitions. In 2015, the department was awarded the Helen Putnam Award for Excellence in Public Safety by the League of California Cities. In 2016, the Menlo Park Police Department was recognized as a finalist by the California Police Chiefs Association for the James Q Wilson Award for Excellence in Community Policing. And later that same year, the International Association of Chiefs of Police chose the department as one of four worldwide to be awarded with their Community Policing Award. With that being said, the agenda in front of us would have you believe and is strongly implied that the Menlo Park Police Department is a non-transparent agency that attempts to hide racial data from its community. It's an institution based on racism, targets minority groups for enforcement, and that the Menlo Park Police Department somehow requires major reform such as civilian oversight and major policy changes. All of these items on the agenda are completely unjustified and are backed by exactly zero facts and data as they apply at the Menlo Park Police Department. So I just wanted to provide that perspective to the community and the council that's listening. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. I'm returning to Zervon Malouf. Zervon, were you able to engage your microphone at this time? Okay, Zervon, my recommendation would be to type your comment into the question fields, and I can deliver it to the city council. Thank you. And I will be returning to Lynn Bramlett. Lynn. Would you like to address the city council at this time? Okay, Lynn, I will come back to you. Or you can also write your comment in the question field, and I can relay that to the city council. The next commenter will be Kathleen Daly. Kathleen, you are off mute and able to address the city council at this time.
Hi, good evening, everyone, and thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. I think it's more important that I share something that I heard on NPR, National Public Radio, the New Yorker magazine, the other day. And it had something to do with Clyburn out of South Carolina. And I just want to play what he says because I think it addresses a number of issues regarding institutional racism, what cities can do, what government can do, and I'm just going to play it and hope you can hear it. So. Thank you.
Well, if Joe Biden is elected in November, and the House is Democratic and maybe even the Senate is Democratic, what is that legislative agenda going to be today? The moment and the movement?
I don't know if I can tell you exactly what it's going to be. I can tell you that it will be a agenda that will respond to Black Lives Matter and everything that flows from it. Now, Black Lives Matter, to me, is as much as law enforcement. When I say Black Lives Matter, the health of Black people matter. So the healthcare delivery system affects Black lives. Affordable housing affects Black lives. Accessible education, access affects Black lives. So Black lives matter as much broader than just one facet of law enforcement.
What kind of reforms do you want to see in policing in America, setting aside the term defunding?
I would like very much for us to reimagine what policing is all about. Free, community policing. Real community policing wouldn't go. That policing, especially in the black communities, has devolved into armed occupations. Why do we have police departments, police military sites? Police departments with military weapons that only get drawn when it comes to the, to the black community? So what I want to see us do is sit down and say, we're going to have community oversight. It's all thing that we put in the boards of community people. Don't say so about how police do their jobs. A bunch of foolishness. I don't care what police officer says, they need to protect themselves. And nobody who is doing the right thing would care about people for what they're doing.
Now, Barton wants to give $300 million to the police departments for community policing. But with all the problems you described, why do these departments need even more money than that?
I don't know that they need more money. I think what we need is for police departments to do policing, not the counselors for.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. At this time, I will read the public comments submitted by Zervon Malouf. Founded in 1976, the National Organization of Black Law Enforcement Executives, Noble, has served as the conscience of law enforcement by being committed to justice by action. Noble represents over 3,000 members internationally who are primarily African-American, chief executive officers of law enforcement agencies at federal, state, county, and municipal levels, other law enforcement administrators, and criminal justice practitioners. Noble addressing critical issues that are germane to improving both the law enforcement profession and its service to our community. Noble's motto, "Justice by Action", is consistent with the efforts to pursue our goals by conducting research, providing training, and professional development opportunities, addressing relevant issues, and performing a variety of community outreach activities. As an example, members of our chapter have facilitate Noble's Law and Your Community Training, a hands-on, interactive program designed for young people ages 13 to 18, designed to improve police and community relationships. Noble Strong recommends using an outside entity to conduct independent use-of-force investigations consistent with the recommendations outlined in the final report of the President's Task Force on 21st Century Policing. We also recommend, in the spirit of transparency and as permitted by statute, police departments take all measures to ensure that the community is kept abreast throughout investigations. The San Francisco Bay Area chapter is committed to community outreach. We hope that you will join us as we continue working on building and strengthening relationships between law enforcement and our community. What we do, Noble offers an onsite technical assistance and training to police departments and develops model policing practices and procedures designed to decrease racial harassment and implicit bias. Noble conducts research and training and offers technical assistance and crime victim assistance, community-oriented policing, domestic violence, use of deadly force, and minority recruitment. For more information, you can visit noblenational.org or visit the local chapter's website, noblesfbbayarea.com. Thank you for your public comment. And I will try Lynn Bramlett one more time. Lynn, you are off mute. Perfect, thank you.
Good, thanks. Thank you for your patience with me. So appreciate the obvious conversations that have gone on regarding the staff report. I mean, just based on what the city manager said. A few comments. First, the police department internal review. I think any review like that should have an outside consultant who reports directly to council. Those last reports in the Public Works Department and the community development, the staff had those for months before council saw them. And I've commented on that to you before, and I just want to bring that up again. One of the prayer speakers basically suggested that we trust GARR, trust their definitions, et cetera. But I want to point out that those kinds of specifics should have been in the staff report. If there are definitions for some of these vague terms, I don't think we should, actually, we weren't really pointed anywhere for more specific information, but that should be in the staff report. And as one of the other speakers mentioned, reforms and bias trainings don't do that much. And so comparative data, I think, would have been helpful. I am concerned about any vague words with no desired end state and vague goals. And I go back to the Connect Menlo guiding principles that we, I think many of us believed in, but they lack measurements, and as written, they actually couldn't have been measured. So I don't want us to make this mistake again. And I think imprecise language shows that the thinking needs to be sharpened. And this, you know, of course, we can all do this, but I think it's important to do this work first. I do agree that training may not lead to change. And I think we will see more impactful change if council would make policy decisions. One of them would be along the lines of when a department is being reviewed, have the consultant report to you, not the staff. I think that's far more objective. I also think, as one of our last speakers said, we need to have a policy for a more diverse workforce. It's, our workforce is very white. And I think we need to set goals there, including for people serving on the commissions, change the union contracts. I also point out that the League of Local Government has a good, better governance checklist, and they have a lot of ideas for hiring. And one of them is that council is involved in the hiring. And I think our municipal code needs to change so that you do have this input, and we do have outside searches, and we do make a concerted effort to bring in diversity. I think fundamentally, that will lead to far more change than, you know, training, et cetera. So I sent you a memo about this. Hopefully, you'll have a chance to read it. Thank you for your time tonight. Appreciate your patience.
Thank you for your comment. Our next public commenter is Kevin Gallagher. Kevin, you're off mute and able to address the city council at this time.
Hi, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Awesome. Again, I appreciate you for having me. I wasn't originally planning to speak, but I just wanted to say something in relation to some of the previous commenters and speak to the whole kind of defund versus reform argument. For me, it comes down to worldview. There are a lot of folks who view the police as an inherently benevolent institution who are meant to protect and serve everyone. And then when that doesn't happen, and individual officers commit acts of violence or harass or profile certain people, it's viewed as something that can be fixed because it's an individual problem. The alternate worldview, which is what I subscribe to, is that the police were meant from the very beginning of their existence as an institution to enforce inequality and segregation. And so, you know, reforms to the police might not, not be helpful, but reforms typically don't address the actual nature and purpose of the institution. For me, this isn't about individuals being racist or bad or prejudiced. This is about an institution whose purpose is to enforce inequality. I was recently at a protest in Palo Alto. One of the speakers was a black man from East Palo Alto who grew up there. He talked about his experiences growing up in East Palo Alto, and he discussed how, at the time, it was a fairly dangerous place with a high proportion of murders and other types of serious violence. And he talked about how he still felt much safer there than he did in Palo Alto, which was, you know, statistically much safer. And the reason for that is that whenever he entered Palo Alto, he was frequently profiled, harassed, and threatened by the police. It wasn't any one specific police officer. It was an institution. It was an institution making sure he didn't feel safe and comfortable in the, the white and wealthy part of town and influencing him to stay in his, you know, quote unquote, place, which was the less affluent black and brown part of town. And for me, this is what we're talking about. I appreciate the comment from, from Chris earlier, talking about his disagreements with the, kind of the inflection of this report. I know it's hard to express opinions like that, especially in public. I'm a white man. I know from personal experience how hard it can be to be accused of being racist. It personally took me a long time to understand how to not take that personally, how to honestly assess my own role in upholding racist systems, not just in, you know, being biased or prejudiced, but in being part of a greater system that disadvantages people. And for me, that's what it's about. Menlo Park may have a relatively low amount of violent incidents with the police, but Menlo Park is a very segregated and unequal city. We're all well aware of the differences in Menlo Park on either side of the 101, and I think it's naive of us not to consider the role of the police historically and currently, honestly, in upholding those differences. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. And at this time, I see no further hands raised. Mayor Taylor, you may continue. Thank you. Oh, one moment. When, I do apologize. I saw some flicker. Aram James, did you want to provide a public comment? Again, this is for Aram James. Okay, I'm going to take the silence as no comment. Aram, if you do have a comment, please use the question or chat feature, and I can relay that to the city council. So again, Mayor Taylor, you may continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron, and thank you to everyone that provided a public comment. I know that this topic has a, a lot of interest, and I greatly appreciate our community members for providing their perspective on how the council should move forward. And I wanted to follow up on a few things, and I wasn't sure how much I could talk about this publicly. So I checked with our interim city attorney. So just thinking about the diversity here on our, on our staff. And I know that Prop 209 was passed a long time ago, and it is on the, well, maybe on the ballot. I just wanted to find out because some organizations have taken some leadership that even though Prop 209 says you cannot give preferential treatment, is there any opportunity for the city of Menlo Park to take a leadership role to increase the diversity on our staff? And so, Ms. Silver, do you mind coming on screen?
Thank you. Cara Silver, interim city attorney. And yes, so Proposition 209 was passed, I think, five years ago now. And it was a constitutional amendment that essentially prohibited affirmative action programs. And California is, I believe, one of eight states that has this constitutional amendment that actually prevents affirmative action programs. It is, it has gone through, there have been several efforts to repeal Proposition 209. And there's been obviously some opposition to that. And just recently, the, both houses passed a constitutional amendment that would put the, put the repeal on the ballot to, to actually repeal Proposition 209. So we will be voting on that November 3rd. If, if Proposition 209 is repealed, the city council's ability to, to implement affirmative action programs is much broader, obviously. And, and years ago, cities have lots of affirmative action programs to recruit disadvantaged people, to recruit racial minorities, et cetera. But Proposition 209 has eliminated that ability in the public sector. You can still have affirmative action programs in the private sector, but not in the public sector at this point. That said, even though, you know, we have this restriction currently, there is an ability to do, to increase our diversity on our own staff. And there are ways to do that. There's certainly targeted recruitments is an option where you, you know, local hire programs, that type of thing. You go into communities of color and encourage, encourage folks to apply to city jobs. And you, you know, you have dialogues with, with people and just to increase really the diversity pool. Now, in, in Menlo Park and in other peninsula cities, their housing is always an issue. And so it's, you know, you might want to consider housing subsidies to, you know, help with the cost of living. That, that certainly is, is something that you can do as well. The other types of programs, there, there are ways to eliminate kind of institutional biases in the overall recruiting process itself. And I understand that GARE and, and other organizations have a lot of training and best practices on this. I was listening to, to a webinar recently where UC Berkeley in, in the Lawrence Livermore Lab has a fabulous diversity department. And, and they have developed a lot of programs, and there's, and they have a, an actual department that encourages this type of thing. So, so there, there are a lot of options that we do have. But, you know, with, if Prop 209 is repealed, you will have even further options.
Thank you, Ms. Silver. I have a follow-up question, and I'm not sure if you have the information. Have we ever had a diversity goal on staff?
Yeah, I, I don't know about, I don't know.
Thank you. I appreciate you providing the information.
Yeah, and I will, I will say that, that we did have an affirmative action program before Proposition 209 because I was, I was just reviewing some, some old documents. And, but that, that, obviously, that program then was put by the wayside when Proposition 209 passed.
So we can set, the council can do, still do something around increasing diversity with or without Prop 209. We could do something separately. And I'm, I've always been an advocate of hiring local. So if people already live in Menlo Park, and then increasing diversity through our city, working for our city. So that's what my intention would be. So I'm not sure how to get there, but that's what I was, was, wanted to ask you about via text, but it made more sense to ask you publicly. And then also, this has come up on a public comment a few times, just about our city lacks diversity. That's the assumption. And so, and that's why I asked you about the demographics of our organization.
Right. And, and I think we can do some, I know that we have produced the demographics information to the city council, and that might be something that we should also disseminate to the community so that there is more transparency around that. And again, we, the city collects demo.
You, we can't hear you.
I apologize for that. So we do, we have given the city council the, some demographic information about our workforce, and we can make that information available to the public as well. And that would help, I think, for transparency. But the, the demographic information is provided on a voluntary basis by employees. We cannot require them to give us that information. And so the information is, is, is not entirely accurate, but it, it gives some sense of, of the demographics of our existing workforce.
Thank you, Ms. Silver. Are there any other questions? Councilmember Nash.
Thank you. Would it be possible, can we add a policy that we want to implement a, a policy of hiring, hiring practice of interviewing a diverse slate of candidates? And that no hires will be approved without diverse interviews?
So I, I think, I think you can. That doesn't seem to discriminate against a particular race. Of course, you'd have to define diverse. And then what happens if, if you don't receive a diverse slate of candidates? You would have, you know, You would have, you know, the policy should address that situation as well.
Mr. Figuerres?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just quickly for the council and public's information, I do want to share that the city of Menlo Park's executive and management team is comprised of 17 individuals. And of those individuals, four are non-white, which is about 23%. Our police department is 40% non-white. And our Public Works Department, we have, we can, we're gathering that data, but it's estimated currently at around two-thirds non-white. So just to the extent that that helps the council in their discussion. And for comparison, we have, the demographics for the city of Menlo Park is that 68, roughly 69% of the city of Menlo Park is white alone. 4.6% black or African-American, and 13.5% Asian alone, with the Hispanic or Latino of any race being 15.7%.
Thank you, Mr. Figuerres, for the information. And at this time, Ms. Heron sent me a text to say that one of our public commenters were able to, I guess, fix their microphone. So, Ms. Heron, we just have one more public comment.
Correct. So I'm coming back to Aram James. Aram, you are off mute and able to address the city council at this time.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, as far as Proposition 209, which we renamed as the California Civil Whites Initiative because what it was is an attempt to keep employment of African-Americans down and affirmative action in the schools, et cetera. It's been a disaster. So I would ask, as the first thing, the Menlo Park City Council to pass a resolution to repeal 209. That would be simple enough. Let's go back to the law enforcement issues. I want to thank the two executives from the National Organization of Black Law Enforcement, Ms. Carter and Mr. Malouf. And I'd like you all to discuss, bringing them on to prepare an alternative report regarding the discriminatory law enforcement in Menlo Park, which encompasses a whole lot more than simply racial profiling. So the term is racially discriminatory law enforcement and the use of tasers, and the use of turning off your body worn cameras when you interview individuals, all sorts of different levels and nuance of racially discriminatory law enforcement. Also, one of the things I found Palo Alto City Council, Redwood City Council, all throughout the cities, I'm a former public defender, and I've taken a great interest in police practices over the last decade and a half, is that there doesn't seem to be generally an advocate on any of the city council who actually starts to learn the nuance of police practices so they can actually cross-examine and dig deeper when they're starting to talk to members of law enforcement. So law enforcement inevitably starts to control the conversation. And so it's a one-way model law. So I invite each of you to become experts on police practices, on all the different tactics of racially discriminatory law enforcement. Get that knowledge, and then don't back off. Don't feel shy about asking hard questions about law enforcement. You know, I'm going to tell you, if you look in the recent last three or four years, you'll see a comment by Bertini that says, you know, anybody that thinks the seven out of the 10 towings of African-Americans and Latinos vehicles is racial profiling, that's asinine, he said, and it borders on scandalous. You know, how outrageous and racist for Bertini. You've got to get him off of the committee to be one of the parties that selects the next police chief. And I really recommend Ron Davis. I know him personally. He's a very open gentleman. He knows police practices as well as anybody in this country. Let's at least get him as our interim police chief. And let's bring Noble aboard and give them an opportunity to do an alternative report. This is a historic time in this country. We're about to drop off a cliff if we don't keep our democracy together. And democratic policing is a beginning, a beginning. Thank you very much for letting me address you tonight.
Thank you for your comment. Mayor Taylor, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. At this time, we normally would have our dinner break from 6:45 to 7:05. Just checking with the council to see if you want to, considering it's just after 7:00, if you wanted to take a break now and then resume this conversation sometime around 7:25. Is that fair? Everyone comfortable with that?
Okay. Thank you. So as a reminder, please disengage your webcams and microphones and only engage your webcams when you return. Thank you.
Welcome back, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. Having all present, Mayor Taylor, you may continue the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. And now the discussion is at the City Council regarding Item F2. Were there any follow-up questions? I think before we ended, we asked our interim City Attorney a few questions regarding diversity and inclusion. It's had a, actually a question for, well, I had a question for the council. I know that we don't have much information and I have not been able to read the CCIN letter from Noble. But did anybody have any thoughts about that or did anyone have an opportunity to actually read the CCIN letter? And that's from the, I believe it's the National Organization of Black Law Enforcement. Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah. I haven't read the email, but I just wanted to make sure. So like the two things that we in theory are sort of are providing some direction on, right, are the chief recruitment process and this overall sort of institutional bias engagement framework, like exercise that we want to engage in. And so I just want to understand, like, you know, should we sort of focus on one of those? And so let's resolve that issue, like whether it's like how we want the police chief search to look and give the staff some direction in that area and then move on to the sort of the institutional bias item. Or do, you know, whatever order we take them in is fine, but I think I would prefer that we sort of again bifurcate them and take them each individually.
Okay, we can start with the police chief recruitment. Vice Mayor Combs?
Okay, with that, I have a question. Couldn't someone on the staff sketch out for me how the last one or two police chief recruitment processes looked like? It hasn't been that long, right, that we've engaged in a police chief process? And so for me, I like sort of more clarity because I would see that as a baseline. And then, you know, from there could make some determination of what changes, like I would want to see if any.
So I'll start this, but Nick Pogares may want to join in on it as well. And he can speak more definitively to the last recruitment. I think that was done as an internal recruitment or as an appointment. The prior recruitment for police chief when Bob Johnson was appointed was a national search and we used a recruiter. And we did receive some community input, but not perhaps as elaborately as we're offering as an opportunity for the council to pursue. Is that helpful?
Yes. Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, I would just add for my colleagues, I served on council during both recruitments and was not officially involved in either. So actually learned that I knew recruitments were taking place, but first time I met Chief Johnson was after he was hired. And obviously knew then Commander Bertini, but knew of his, knew of it, did not, did not, you know, knew of the job. not, you know, knew of the job afterwards, obviously informally had an idea because he was serving as interim chief that was taking place, but there was not a formal part of that process. So to the extent, my understanding is that to the extent that the mayor and the vice mayor have been involved, I would just say, I think that's, I commend staff on our management, professional management staff on that for that inclusion. I think that, that, that's something that hasn't happened in the past, to my knowledge, although I do think that members of the, that there were specific members in the community who were invited to meet past candidates, that council involvement was very limited in the past.
Mr. Pagaros.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Mueller is, is absolutely correct. The most recent appointment of a police chief, Chief Bertini, it commenced with the departure of Chief Johnson to the city of Palo Alto. Chief Bertini was then commander was named interim by the city manager. And I believe it was approximately, he served as interim chief for approximately a year and then was named the regular appointment. We like not to say, in the HR world, we like not to use the word permanent because there's nothing that's permanent in life, but the chief was named regular. And, you know, just to provide some insight into the thought process that I was privy to relative to the appointment of Chief Bertini, there's always a fine balance between the success of an external recruitment, given the labor market conditions. One of the comments that I believe this interim city attorney made was regarding housing prices and it can be incredibly challenging to recruit folks who do not live in this immediate area, particularly at the executive level. And so it, the, at the time, the consideration was, the analysis was done by the then city manager, the ability, the talent that we had internally, as well as the prospects of an external recruitment. And if I'm not mistaken, I'm sorry if I, I'm sorry if you mentioned it, Starla, but the Chief Johnson recruitment went twice, if, or maybe that was the prior. Yeah, so it's not uncommon for executive level recruitments to experience two sort of rounds. And the challenge there is that it's very difficult for the organization to move forward, not knowing the leader that will be in charge of the department going forward. So everything sort of typically with an interim, everything goes into a, keep, keep things the same until the new leader emerges and is appointed.
Councilmember Nash. You're on mute.
Thank you. How long did the Chief Johnson recruitment take with the two rounds?
You know, we'd have to go back and look. I mean, six months is usually a pretty swift recruitment and so probably roughly, we would have to go back and look to be accurate.
The follow-up question on that, just a follow-up question, excuse me, Councilmember Nash. So how long, if that took six months, oh, how long was the community involvement? This was that just towards the end and it was a month or two months?
You know, my memory is imperfect, but what I recall is that it was at the end where when you narrow it down to one or two finalists, you engage a community panel to talk to those folks. It's very difficult to keep confidentiality when you have community participation and many great applicants are unwilling to go through an application process if they are fearful that their application is going to become known publicly because they're afraid that that will signal to their current employer dissatisfaction with their job and could have ramifications at their place of employment.
Councilmember Nash, did you have another question because I interrupted you? Okay. So I have another question, just considering where, where we are in this moment, looking for an interim and then we'll be looking for a permanent police chief. So is this the normal time to have this discussion or? So when you're looking for an interim police chief, the idea is also to look for a permanent police chief if that interim isn't interested or, or whatever. So I'm just thinking of just the, the timing of everything, like where we are in this moment. And I know that there's a schedule, so to speak, to get the interim in place. And so if it takes six months to a year to get the permanent police chief in place, normally does the interim police chief have any input on the process to find the permanent police chief?
I think that's a case-by-case basis. I don't think there's a standard. So if we have, when we have an interim chief, let's say he's worked, he's retired or she's retired from a different organization, we would certainly ask them for recommendations on people to ask to apply for the position because they might know folks that they've worked with who would be a great fit for our organization once they, you know, learned a little bit more about our organization. But that's, that's usually the role they would play.
Thank you. Councilmember Mueller.
So I, thank you, Mayor Taylor. One of the things I'm trying, I'm struggling with is that it's an HR process and that the identity of individuals usually in an HR process can, or there's some level of privacy expectation for candidates because they're, they're, they're maybe coming from somewhere else and they may want to get us know, to get to know us first before their identity becomes public. And I'm wondering, but there have been occasions where there's, there has been like a quasi-public process. And I'm curious to hear management's thought on, on that, on some, some mix in between. Because I do, I do believe that there is a fair amount of interest in the hiring of the police chief, as you can tell, Mr. Robinson. And, and I do think that it's, I do think it's worthy of a quasi, of a quasi-public check-in on that. I think it serves, I think it serves the city well and I think it serves professional management well. So I'm curious if that's something that you've thought about or, and knowing you, you have put some thought into that, and so I'd love to hear that.
Well, I think given the conversation we've been having at the council level, what would be highly beneficial is to have community input, sort of a visioning process about their, the community expectation about a police chief and what they're expecting and what qualities they're looking for. And, and that visioning process doesn't take, you know, endanger the confidentiality of any potential applicants. Now then, we might want to have some type of additional community input at the end, but perhaps towards the very end. And frankly, I think we should hire a recruiter and I think that recruiter will tell us what the most current trends are in recruiting police chiefs. That's part of their value. And they should also be bringing a number of names that they think would be a good fit for our organization.
I think that's a thoughtful approach to both have the weighing and the visioning in the end, but also the community, that community check in with candidates at the end of the process as well. So I think that's going to be really important. I also did want to comment and not let the moment pass where we just talk about this and move on without talking a little bit about what I heard in public comment and some of the conversations I've had leading up to tonight. So I've managed, I've sat down with a couple of the police, members of the Chiefs Advisory Committee and I heard, I obviously heard the comments tonight from, from Officer Dare. And it's, my response to those things is that it's not, the conversation we have now is not reflective about our strengths. It's not a judgment on our strengths or about how good we are. It's really a discussion about what we should aspire to be. I really hope people will start to approach that in that fashion. Whenever there's a discussion about race, it's very easy to have defensive feelings pop up because for so many of us, our morality is wrapped around the fact that we aren't racist. And so when that comes up, defensive feelings pop up and then that those can, those can basically affect the conversation or when we're talking about really, we can take pride in what our strengths are, but also take measure of our weaknesses and aim to be stronger. And that's how I've started to view this. And when I look at our weaknesses and I think where can we be stronger, you know, there are things that just come up, like the Neighborhood Service Center has been a major disappointment. It was, I remember when it was opened, I remember going and it was full of kids and it was going to be a community serving center and the, you know, the, and it was, and it's not. It's turned into an annex that's only available to officers. And it's not, it's not what it was envisioned to be. And it's absolutely fair to ask why and it's fair to ask and measure if we over-police an area of the city versus other and let metrics at that. That's totally fair. It's appropriate to do that. And I think we can and should ask ourselves, and this is the real key, and I, when I, when I say this to our department and I say this to folks, it's fair to ask, should, you know, do minorities and different socioeconomic groups in the city have a different impression of our public safety officers and of our police department? And it's, and I, I think it's really incredibly important to understand this belief because we can't claim there's equity in public safety if those who are, it's meant to serve feel uncomfortable with those interactions. And it really is, you know, the more I've come to understand it or reflect on it, it really is a collective subjective feeling that we're looking at. Because in that case of those, if it's, if you don't metricize that, if you don't look at that, you can't measure whether or not there's equity both in, in equal access to that resource and in equal access into how everyone is served. And so saying all of those things isn't something that is a judgment on our strengths, it's saying we need to take collective and be more, we should strive to be more. And so, you know, when, those are the things, so I, you know, I looked at the police report and I looked at the, I looked at the website and the website, you know, what's been done with the website, didn't want it to pass and not say, the new website is full of great information. And I appreciate that and I appreciate that the vision, you know, you can see the police advisory commissioners there. And that was something that, you know, I'm talking to the Police Advisory Commission, you know, they're, you know, they've managed to be like, hey, wait a second, like we work with the chief, like is this a judgment on us, like what's going on? No, it's not. We can be more. We're trying to figure out how to be stronger. And so, and so I'm excited about all those things. With respect to Noble, I think that's, I mean, how could you say that that's anything but outstanding to have that expertise to consult with, that wants to consult with us? Regarding the, the former East Palo Alto chief, certainly something for the mayor and the vice mayor and the city manager to discuss and the attributes of that police chief is something, the former chief there is something that we can certainly draw upon in that visioning process. I also, and I'll leave it, my comments there on the police, the police department access because I know we're going to talk about the other diversity and inclusion and those other issues there. But I really would like the conversation to change into some respects because I think it's being, I think it's less binary than people are somewhat making it. I really think that we can, we can make this a moment where we come together and we're, we're diving in, we're saying, how can we be stronger for our whole community collectively?
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. I appreciate your, your comments and the, the idea of the conversation changing, the fact that we are even, are even here. For me is, it reminds me of how well we work together when we communicate with one another and especially from an honest and a, and a good place. And I know some of the conversation is uncomfortable, but it's something we're going to move through together. And, and the work that Noble does for me is exciting, but I am going to go back to Vice Mayor Combs' suggestion and do stick to our two topics because, for the moment, because it, it makes sense because at least we will get through that. I, I appreciate that Vice Mayor Combs and I have been a part of some, a part of some of the discussion around the, the interim. And I'm hoping that that will continue even with the permanent police chief. And I do appreciate our city manager did talk about this before about the community being a part of that process. What that looks like, I'm, I'm not sure, especially with privacy concerns, the HR concerns. And so, so I'm not sure if anybody else, what Councilmember Nash, what do you think about it? And unfortunately, Councilmember Carlton isn't here. I'd love to hear what her thoughts are as well, just what that piece would look like to have community input, like where does that live? I like the city manager's suggestion around the, the visioning and the community being a part of the visioning. Councilmember Nash.
Thank you. So I agree with what has been said. I think that what I was imagining for the community input, certainly at first, is something around visioning. And I think that Ms. Robinson did a good job of articulating that with a visioning process about what we're looking for in a police, or what the community is looking for in a police chief, sort of the qualities and expectations. And I think that would be very, a very worthwhile process. And I would like to make sure that the mayor and vice mayor stay involved in the recruitment or in the interview process. And I guess I'd like to make sure that we have a diverse slate of candidates. I do believe that we should be using a recruiter and, but I don't know, perhaps that can be part of what the mayor and vice mayor all, as well as works with the city manager or get some input to the city manager as far as who we use because there is a range of recruiters who have different strengths. And I think that it would be worthwhile just sort of evaluating those. Obviously, this is the city manager's decision, but to the extent that we can continue to have input, that's, that is worthwhile and I actually would like to see that. I don't know if it needs to be formalized, but I'd like to make sure that that does happen. And I think that the mayor and vice mayor are excellent council, will represent an excellent perspective of the council. So I wholeheartedly support that. I'm not sure exactly how I, what the tail end of the recruitment looks like because I do acknowledge that there's certainly privacy concerns, but to the extent that we can have some community members involved, that would be worthwhile. And I certainly would like, actually, I, I would like to have the person meet the entire council and just so that we actually can meet the candidate before they actually are announced. And I'm, I'm, was not, did not follow closely the other police chief recruitments and am surprised to hear Councilmember Mueller say that, how he was not fully aware of what was, was not fully informed as to what was happening at the time. So I think that it, it would be very good to have the council involved. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Combs and then Councilmember Mueller.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, thanks. First, I'm gonna break my own rule and go just a little astray, but I'll, I'll, I'll come back, I promise. You know, I, I want to say that I very much appreciate Officer Adair's comments and, and I appreciate very much his, his engagement in, in this process and in this form. I, I am though sorry that, that he feels to some extent that he has to defend the police department or that the, the police department is under attack. Because I can tell you, in my community, there is a lot of pride associated with the Menlo Park Police Department. And so I, I don't, I, I don't in any way feel that, that he should get the sense that, that even from this body or from the community, that, that there is some sense of, of that the, the police department should is, is, is sort of subject to be, to be attacked. What I think we're, we're saying is that, that in some of these situations, let's revisit decisions that were made where the full community weren't part of that decision-making process. And, and that's okay. That doesn't mean that that's not a judgment of, of, of what's, what's there now. But it is saying that, hey, at some point in the, the past, decisions were made and, and maybe the entire community wasn't engaged. Maybe the elected body for the community at the time didn't fully represent all of Menlo Park. And, and so I, I think it's, it's very much a, a, a good exercise to, to engage in revisiting some, some of, some of those decisions. And I'd also say that like, you, you know, there is a national debate that's going on now. And, and I think it very much makes sense for, you know, Menlo Park to plug into that debate. Very much makes sense for us to see what those learnings and, and what that, what reform could, could look like. And, and I think that that doesn't, that, that doesn't speak to any judgment on the current police department. If anything, I think it, it leans into the, the, the tradition that Officer Adair laid out of, of the police department as, as being on the leading edge when it comes to looking at, at, at police reform. And even if you look at things sort of like this idea of some, you know, civilian oversight board or body. I mean, in many ways, that's just sort of a refashioning of, of the, the current, you know, chief's advisory committee, right? Or that just refashioning that in a different way to give it a little bit more visibility and maybe to formalize the structure. But it, it doesn't have to be seen as something that is in, in any way like an affront to, to what's there now. Again, in many ways, what I think we're, we're talking about are, are tweaks. So I, I just wanted to say that. And also, I don't know if I said, very much appreciated Councilmember Mueller's comments. I, I hope they were, were really great at, at framing, I, I think, all what we are, we are trying to accomplish here. Getting into the, the police chief search. I, I would say certainly in support of, of, of hiring or engaging a, a recruiting forum to, to, to lead this process. I say that like I am concerned in would not be in favor of an overly of the process that what I would say overly involves the, the, the public. And, and, and again, I'm certainly okay with a, a visioning, you know, sort of scoping type session or community engagement event to, to really sort of think about what are, are the characteristics that the community would, would value most in, in a police chief. But, but I do think that like if you engage in this very public process, you very much limit the, the, your, your the, the candidates you're going to get. And that's just, that's just the case. You're going to, you know, get the candidates who are in a position to publicly seek a job. And, and there are a lot of candidates out there who would be interested in, in, in pursuing the position, but don't want to sort of be in a position where they are sort of, they're, they're, you know, communicating in some way to their current job that they're, they're, they're willing to leave, right? And, and that's a case across the board, right? When, when, when you're talking about people and, and in hiring. And so I would very much be, like I say, not in favor of, of a process that engages the public in, in it, other than that, that sort of visioning exercise. The community involvement that I would be in favor of is the council. The council is the community, right? And so if we're sort of involving the council, so the extent to which the, the process that the, the mayor and I have been involved in, in connection with interim police chief, I, I definitely think, you know, using that as, as a model for the, for the permanent, the permanent recruitment process, I, I, I think is, is ideal. And then to Councilmember Nash's point, I do think that at some point before a police chief is hired, that that person should have some, some FaceTime or Zoom time, depending on where we are with this, with every member of the council. I, I do think that, that, that definitely is, 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 but to me, like I said, that community involvement at the end of the process is the council. The council is the community, right? Because these are the people that have been elected by the residents of Menlo Park. And, and I feel that it, it's not, and they are the best. I, I think they are the best positioned to, to really provide some, some like engagement with that candidate about what they might be getting into, what is the full context of the community? And for them to also get their, their, their questions answered, I, I think it probably like, again, bringing in, you know, people in the community that's not the council who have been involved, probably would, would, you know, not give, I think, on, on either side, a clear picture of, of sort of what's, what's going on. Other than that, I think that, yeah, that, that's, that, that's, that's, that's my comments.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. I, just thinking about the advisory committee. Or do you have any thoughts about their participation? Definitely not the entire committee, maybe one person from the committee. I have not had any contact with anyone on the advisory committee, the police chief's advisory committee. But what are your thoughts about that?
Again, I, I go back to it's the council, right? It, it, it is, I, I do think, I, I think it's, it's sort of this, 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 you know, nice idea and exercise of involving the, the, the community. But I, I mean, let's get back to that. At the end of the day, this is a, a decision of the city manager, right? And, and so when the person reports to the city manager, I, I think, you know, going out one, one sort of layer and looping in the, the city council is appropriate, right? And, and I do think not only appropriate, but really provides value going both ways. I, I don't know that, that like I see as much value, to be honest, in, in having, you know, whether it's the police, whether it's the chief advisory committee or someone else, like sort of being engaged in that process. I think to the extent to which those people want to provide some involvement, then it is that they should reach out to their council member, right? Or to the council as a whole and say, hey, this is stuff that I want to make sure that you, you are, that are top of mind for you as you're engaging with this person. I, I think, what is it, Mr. Mr. Amar, I, I think, you know, said that, hey, we should take it upon ourselves to really educate ourselves about police tactics, right? And so I think this will be part of that process, right? Of really educating ourselves about like the police talent at the executive level that's available, what that looks like. You know, how attractive is, is being police chief in, in Menlo Park? And, and also like, you know, getting, getting sort of a greater understanding of, of, of those tactics. So, so that's where I, I'm sorry, that's a long-winded answer to, to your, your very, very short follow-up question. But, but that, that's where I stand on it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. Councilmember Mueller?
Councilmember Combs, I respect your opinion greatly and thank you. The, the one thing I would offer just as food for thought as I think about it, and I'm perfectly willing to defer to my colleagues' take on this, is that, as I say here, I think we have a very thoughtful, compassionate, diverse council. But we don't, I'm not sure, we work very hard. But I'm not sure that, that we can take for granted that we may have the viewpoint of our Latinx community, our non-English speakers, or I think that to the extent that we are going to go through this process, I think expanding the scope of our five council members to try to go ahead and make sure that we've reached out into those other populations, I think is probably worthy of, of some thought and effort. Because I, the one thing I have learned and been humbled by is I don't always understand. I try real hard, but I don't always. So I'd love to, I'd love to expand it a little further.
Thank you for bringing that up. That is extremely important, extremely important. Councilmember Nash, I don't know if you had your hand up or, no, okay. I wanted to call our city manager back for a moment. Ms. Darla Jerome Robinson, just wanted to find out, just based on the, the feedback that you just heard, are there, are there any other questions that you have, the council, specific to the recruitment of the police chief?
Well, let me summarize what I think I heard. And that is that the council supports a recruiter, which I think is excellent, and supports community visioning in the beginning of the process. And understands that it might threaten the quality of the group recruitment to engage too many community members in the end, but the council would like to be involved. Gare summary?
Yes.
Okay, all right, then we're good.
Okay, so now on to the next topic, which is the the bias reform, institutionalized bias reform or equity and inclusion reform, like some reform that's related to the structure of our, our municipality. And just looking at the, the list here on number two, expectations of training, acceptable timeline for training, who's required to take racial equity training. Just, just a, a thought, considering where, what our climate is. There is a lot of information in the public right now. There's a lot of repeat reading material available, a lot of forums that are happening locally. And I'm not sure if any, I, I participated in one and I've also listened to a few. So, and I know that Councilmember Mueller, I believe it's How to Be an Anti-Racist, is reading that. Just thinking about the material that, that's available, I just wanted to check in to see, besides Councilmember Mueller, if anyone else on the council is, is participating in, in any of this or is, is listening to it or has any thoughts. Councilmember Nash?
I would just agree with, there is so much material out there and there are both just online and in TV broadcasts and with various papers and articles out there that are just incredible. And I've certainly, I mean, I could recommend a few pieces. I'm gonna have to look quickly, but there's definitely pieces that are, have really been impactful and made a huge difference in just my understanding and how to think about all these issues.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash. The first part of the, I'm just looking at the staff report, the expectation of training. The second part is expectation of organizational analysis. And so Ms. Darla Jerome Robinson, I have a, a question. Would this happen in tandem or is this one happens first and then a second? I don't have the timeline in front of me. Just curious.
That's a great question. I think the training would happen first so that we have that as part of our skill set and toolset before we embark on the analysis.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash. You had your hand up. Can you stay with this for a moment?
I was wondering if you could refer to what page you're looking at. I'm not quite following where your, your list yet. Thank you.
It's in the mayor's notes. But this was the attachment we were sent. I have no idea what time this afternoon. But I, I thought we all had it. Go ahead.
I, I think you may have received it and not the full council.
Okay. I have a, now I have a question for Ms. Heron. Is it possible to put it up on the screen so that we all can see it? And this would be the stacks, staff seeks the city council's input on the following topics and questions.
Yes, I can definitely display that on the screen. Just give me a couple of moments here. And for the members of the city council, it was emailed to you approximately four fifteen. But I will display this one.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. Did everyone else receive the attachment?
I now found it in my, I had not seen it before, but I have received it.
Thank you, Ms. Heron.
So Madam Mayor, if I might.
Yes.
In terms of training, I think it would be really helpful, before we set a timeframe for the training, to talk a little bit about who would be required to take the training. And that will help give us an idea of how quickly we can put that together. So it, you know, are we going to focus on 30 people, 50 people, 150 people? Because the timeline will be different if we have larger groups.
Yes, that, that makes sense. What, well, what I'm thinking of is the institution and the change in the institution, which would be a part of city council policy and the municipal code. And then, then it's followed. But I know that the training for staff needs to come. And so I'm, I'm hoping that a GARE representative, if that's who we're going with, or would actually be able to provide that. Because they would look at the organization holistically. And just thinking about how to move forward. And I, I believe that with training, it would definitely, you know, that definitely at the top level, the five of us, including Councilmember Carlton, definitely thinking in those terms. But it would be great to get recommendations from the organization that would be doing the training, what that process would look like, what would make sense. So for me, I'm thinking anybody in HR. If, if we're hiring or if we're procuring any contracts. Any place where it's, you know, people to people. Vice Mayor Combs, oh, sorry.
I was just gonna say that'd be a great place to start. The exec staff, the council, HR and contract, those involved in contract procurement.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs.
Yeah, I think I was gonna share something similar that, that I, I think the, the first crop executive staff, and I was seeing it as council. I, I mean, for me, again, because, you, you know, there are the value, there's lots of trainings out there. And the value varies to be, to be delicate in the language. And so I feel like before I could actually sort of be in support of some training being rolled out institution-wide, that it would have to be something that I have personally participated in. And I can say that like, this has value because I participated in it and I understand it. And, and again, the flip side of it is, is I want to also be able to say, if, if there is some training I participated in, that I see had limited value, that then, then I would want to come back and say, like, I don't know if this is the best investment of the, the city's time and resources, right? And so, but again, like, I want to be in a position to make that determination. And so I feel that like, again, the executive staff and city council should be, be, it should be a smaller crop of people. And to the extent to which it's, it's, it's HR and, and people in contract procurement, I still think that that's not adding a lot of additional people. And so I could be in, in support of that. But I certainly think that everyone on council, it should be something that everyone on council does and is able to like come to an opinion on before, before we sort of then, then sort of look at rolling it out institution-wide.
Understood.
Councilmember Mueller? Councilmember Mueller?
My only concern is just, I've been trying to get into a Gare program for quite a while, and it's been canceled and canceled because of COVID. So, so, so I actually, and I think I've shared this, but shared with my colleagues, I signed up for a program through Cornell, Cornell University, on diversity and inclusion, that I start next week, for like, two months. So, I just, I can't, the Gare, you can't, I can't get into a Gare program. And I realized that the, as, as Ms. Grove stated, like, there's just a vocabulary and grasp of the knowledge that I'm still not, and, and just basic, you know, everything has changed so much since I was going through college and law school, that just, there's just a lot of education to take up. So, I, you know, I think it's great for us to try to, to try to target Gare, but I think we should also probably try to reach out to them and find out how soon it'll be before they have these programs running again, and try to figure out how we can, how we can address this with, with professional staff and council members in the meantime. So.
Mr. Figuerros?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. The, until recently, yeah, until recently, understandably, there have been most of the Gare training that I was aware of was in person. And there's a tremendous value to having that human experience, and to hear and to be in the same room as, as others who were, who were engaging on this, on this process as well. However, due to COVID-19, Race Forward, who works in conjunction with, with Gare, has developed an online training series, and I think it's called Building Racial Equity. It's a two-day series, one, one day, first, first module, and then a second module. We have, I've been attempting to connect with them, to seek if we could get training for Menlo Park, specialized training for Menlo Park, that's just Menlo Park employees or, or leaders. But what we do, and I haven't been very successful in that, but what I do have are four tickets to their July 30th online training. And we're, we're trying, we're competing with a lot of people to get, to get those tickets. So, to the extent that it would be helpful, I know that Mayor Taylor, myself, Lankadiaz, who's no longer with us, and Clay Curtin attended the Gare convening last year. This may be a great opportunity, if the date works for council. And we're gonna continue to try to secure additional dates, but we definitely have four tickets. This might be an opportunity for council, if you're available, and maybe the city manager, so you can gain exposure to the training.
Thank you, Mr. Figuerros, and the dates were July 30th?
The first set, the only session we have is the first session, and that's July 30.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Mueller?
I can do the 30th.
I can do the 30th as well.
Mr. Figuerros, is it the same training that we went to before, or is this something slightly different?
This is, this is different. For the council, the, the Gare convening that the mayor and I attended last year was three days, if I'm not mistaken, in Oakland, and, and this is an eight-hour online, so it is very different. I haven't participated in it, so I can't compare. But with that said, you know, with councilmember Nash, councilmember Mueller, and if, if the city manager is available, that may give us a good perspective of the value.
Okay, well, I, I will hold off on volunteering, since I participated in, even if, no, it's different, I participated in something similar already. So, just to give the opportunity to someone else, Ms. Starla Jerome Robinson.
I just have to say, I am jealously guarding my ticket, Nick Figuerros, do not give my ticket away.
That means there's only one left, then.
I, I'd have to be tentative at the moment, as I'm looking at my calendar, so. So, so maybe, maybe we'll, we'll check in with councilmember Carlton, or if there was someone who already had that other ticket in mind. But, but I can, I can follow up, but at the moment, I'm tentative.
Yeah, I, and I, if I'm not mistaken, the city attorney can correct me for training. There is not a, there's an exemption from the Brown Act for training. So, we can have three councilmembers attend the training, and it's online, so it wouldn't be dissimilar from what we're doing right now.
Okay, and Mr. Figuerros does, is it ILG? Do they offer any similar types of training around equity and inclusion?
Off the top of my head, Mayor Taylor, I, I do not know the answer to that question. But we will look into it.
Okay, thank you. My computer is, is overheating. I guess my air conditioning isn't working. And I keep putting my cell phone mute by mistake. So, Ms. Starla Jerome Robinson, I have a, a question about this topic, and then just thinking about what Vice Mayor Combs said, which makes a lot of sense. So, when we look at equity access, inclusion, dealing with race-based issues, my, my goal is to get to the heart of it, and so that's what's happening in the institution. And so, that's why I asked the question earlier, how would we go about this process? For me, it's the most important, I know that behavioral change is a part of it as well, which is why the training for staff and council is important. So, what, what does it look like for the, just looking at this systemic issue? So, is that, what do, what do you see? Tell me what your, your vision is.
Well, and so I think I understand the question, but if I don't answer correctly, then let me know that. I think the best way to look at the systemic issues is to go through the Gare process. You know, as we've talked about before, Gare isn't like some organizations where you send a check, and you sign up, and you're, woo-hoo, you're a member. Gare, you really have to earn that membership, and you have to do a lot of deep analysis and work within the organization. And that's why we, we are, I've been proposing that it's not, not a one-year process, it is culture change, and so it's a forever process, but it will happen incrementally. So, honestly, that would be my first recommendation. Now, alternatively, we could bring in a consultant, who could go through our, some of our material, our policies and procedures and ordinances, and relook at those. But I'd like to give the Gare approach the first, as a first chance.
Okay, I appreciate you sharing your, your thoughts. I am thinking about, and I'm not gonna say this organization's name, but it is in our city, just recently did an audit, a civil rights audit. And so, which came back with, with recommendations. This is, this is what exists in your organization, and this is what's needed. And so, thinking about our timeline, if we waited until after we were trained, I see that timeline being extended. If we brought someone in, we, it would work in tandem with the work that our staff and ourselves, and the council will be doing. And I, at the moment, do not have, you know, an organization to say, let's, let's try A or B. And I don't even know if the language, calling it a, a civil rights audit, is the right, is the right language. But I would look into, I know Policy Link has done some work. I know they, they look more around equitable development, but I'm sure that there's something available there. And I'm not sure if anybody else on council has any information to, to share on this. But I'm looking at, as opposed to waiting until this, until the staff and ourselves has the training, to be able to start recognizing where we need to make change, that we get trained, and look at making the change together. Don't know if anybody has any thoughts on that. Councilmember Nash?
Could you restate the question, I'm not quite capturing it.
So, look, just based on what's on the, the part expectation of the organization. So, there's one piece of it where we would be trained. And there's the, the other piece that would look at what are the systemic issues within the organization. And so, one piece is behavioral change and culture change, the other piece is procedural, it's policy. And so, we're trained by Gare or some other entity, and then we have an audit of what our, our procedures and our policies are, to look at where that change needs to happen. Because the timeline would be longer if we waited until we were trained to be able to make that change. But it would happen at the same time. And so, my question was, I don't have anything specific that I know of, other than Policy Link, that addresses things around that. And so, my question was, after saying all that, is, do, does anybody on council have any information, or have experiences or anything on that? Councilmember Nash?
Thank you. So, I have done two informational sessions on, one was with Gare, and one, I think, actually a number of other people were with on, and this was, and the name isn't coming to me right now. On that, there was someone who's part of Lawrence Livermore Labs and UC Berkeley, and I think they were mentioned earlier today. I remember the individual's first name is Lady, I don't, I've got his last name somewhere very close. But they had, when I looked them up online, there was a substantial body of material there, that looks like it might be worthwhile. I don't know if there's something more there, if they have some organization, but it might be just a place to start looking, if we need other avenues. Because I was extremely impressed with what they had available at the, at the seminar. So, I'd be happy to send the link, or look at it and send the link, whatever would be helpful. But they had a very robust program that looked outstanding.
Ms. Robinson?
Well, maybe we could, I mean, this is a great discussion, so maybe the staff could go out and explore, like, different consultants slash different approaches, and then come back to the council, and identify specifically what documents we'd be looking at, what the cost would be, and what the timeline would be. Because it sounds to me that those are the key areas of the interests by the council.
That makes sense.
Yeah, okay. So, is that my direction?
Are we in agreeance, is there any more input? I think we're in agreeance.
Okay, thanks.
That's all, the nods, thank you.
Great, thanks.
Councilmember Nash?
Thank you, I guess, I would like to put one of the higher priorities to figure out how to work with vendors and people who are supplying various services for the, on behalf of the city, and how to, what is the best way to include them, or make sure that somehow they have, are also getting this lend of equity, and so that when they provide services to the city, they are able to do such on our behalf with, in a similar fashion that we will be doing it.
I appreciate your question, and I'm not sure if that's for our city manager, or for the interim city attorney. But how to, how to include that?
Well, we can come back with a proposal that would include it, or, or at least give you, give you our best effort at doing that.
That works. Thank you, and I, I'm not, Ms. Starla Jerome Robinson, if you can come back for a moment. Thank you. So, on, on this item, on F2, are there any other clarifying questions, or feedback, or direction that you need?
Well, I, I think you have been very helpful, we'll just, I think you'll get another shot at it when we come back to you with our options and budget, so.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Mueller?
I don't know where it fits into nice discussion, so I'm just gonna ask the question here, and that's that. I want to double-check and make sure that we are gonna reach out to Facebook to discuss the INLU payment, and whether or not they're, they'll accept, they'll, they'll rededicate that payment to other purposes. Is there agreement on council that that should take place?
It's, it's my understanding that we have, that it's under our control, that it's up to the council to decide where the money, how the money is being used, as long it is, is it specific to community safety? I could read the language from the staff report.
I, 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 I'm sorry, I appreciate Mayor Taylor, and I understand, and I just wanted to make sure that there was a meeting of the minds as to what the definition of community safety was. So, that's all, it is within our control. I just wanted to make sure that when we, when we do it, because it's, that we, we're sure it falls within that definition, that's all. But I appreciate it, I appreciate it, thank you.
Ms. Silver?
Ms. Silver, I'm happy to jump off, if you think that that's appropriate, and.
So, I don't, I think it's okay at this point, because I'm not actually talk about the negotiations with Facebook. I, I just wanted to say that the, as we described in the staff report, we believe that the language is, is very broad. There are two qualifiers, one is that it needs to be used for safety purposes, but also that it needs to be used for the local area that was designated. And it's, it's not entirely clear what that local area is, but we can assume it's the general area or district that houses Facebook. So, that's the second qualifier. And the, right, there is some excess funds that have not been used from prior years. And of course, we will want a council decision at some point as to whether to use those, those excess funds for another purpose. And then also, you know, the CRT, and that, or, or, or however you define it, is the, I believe that the budget contemplates that that particular staffing is going to be funded through those funds. So, if you want to make a, a different policy direction on that, at some point, we would, we would need to, you know, have that discussion as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Silver. Councilmember, councilmember Mueller?
Mayor Taylor, I would just suggest that I would, I would like that to come back to us then. As a, as a, I would, I would ask my colleagues if you would support it coming back to us then, as an agenda item for consideration.
Can I propose that we do that, definitely, but we do it as part of a larger budget discussion, so it's in context with the budget.
I have a, a follow-up question to that. If the, having it agendized as councilmember Mueller has asked, versus having it as a budget context, so, what would be the difference? One would be, councilmember Mueller has an idea, or anybody else on council, as far as how that money could be used under the policy, versus in the budget context, so I'm, so what's the difference?
Well, I guess, in the first part, it would be a list of ideas the council might have, as to how the money could be used. And in the second part, I'm trying to keep the budget balanced, so if we're taking money from here, how are we going to replace that money? Because it's all fungible, right? If it comes out of this bucket, then, then some other bucket has to back it up.
Okay, that, that makes sense. And so, would it make sense for each council member, and we can share this information with councilmember Carlton, because since this item is with Councilmember Carlton, because since this item has come up so many times, I believe that this will come back sooner than later, and it should, actually. And so, for each council member to have their own ideas, to come to the table with their own ideas as far as what needs to happen that's specific to community safety?
Sure. If the council members wanted even to give us that as soon as, you know, devote a period of time to talk about it, send it to me and Assistant City Manager Nick Figueres, and we can compile a list. So, we've got something to work off of. That would be great.
So, does that make sense? Councilmember Nash?
I would like to know, several times now, there's been a discussion about the air quality monitors and the fact that those didn't come from the funds. And I'm just wondering, in looking for various places we think would be, would benefit from these funds, can you give us some context as to why the air quality monitors did not, were not appropriate? Because that may help us determine what we would bring forward.
You know, I think, oh, she's got the answer to that.
I have a trade going by, but, so, I'm not familiar with the decision on the air quality monitors, but as I review the language in the Facebook development agreement, I think that it would have been an appropriate source of funding for the air quality monitors. It may be that at the time, there wasn't a full audit, as you know, of the funds, and it may be that we were not aware of the overage. I'm just not sure.
Mr. Figueres?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The incorporation of the development agreement funds from Facebook into the budget were appropriated by the council to fund the CRT. And there was some delay in getting the CRT up and running, which results in the surplus that the city attorney and city manager have identified. But that money was fully accounted for at that time. Now, we have a different situation today in that we have fully subscribed, or the council through the budget process has fully assigned the, or made a determination that the CRT team will continue. And it relies, to balance the budget, we need the full allocation for this year. The other piece of information that we haven't discussed, because at the time, that we haven't discussed, is the unused balance. Now, the unused balance, the way, my recollection of our discussions with council publicly on this particular point would be that rather, if there is any unused balance, then rather than it be a five-year term, we would tack on a year after the five-year term or the five-year agreements for Facebook to provide the funds. So, I think we have a slightly different, and that's clearly within the city council's purview to reconsider or to provide different direction. But specific to current year, those monies are fully prescribed.
Councilmember Nash?
So, unfortunately, I did not, I read the report, I didn't prepare exactly where I saw this, but I thought that there actually, certainly in the first year, there was quite a bit of money that was left over, that was unused. But I thought last year, there still was, even though the, one of the major pieces was in fact purchasing police cars. So, my anticipation was that in addition to whatever had been, was the unused balance from the first year and then last year, so I guess 2018, 2019. In 2020, I anticipated that we actually would again have quite a bit of unused balance beyond what it would cost for the CRT. Is that incorrect? So, I'm having trouble reconciling that, what I was anticipating, having read the report, with you're saying that we're actually, all of it's fully allocated.
Yeah, I mean, that was definitely the case in the beginning with regard to establishing the budget authority to staff the CRT. So, the early year is where the bulk of the surplus that we currently have originated. The surplus that was originated that results from the last fiscal year is a combination, there are a combination of factors that play into that. The first is that the initial estimate for, the initial estimate, the five-year estimate, made a number of assumptions. We did not, at that time, we did not have labor agreements in place that would sufficiently cover the five-year term. We also didn't know what would happen with PERS. So, as experience is different from our initial assumptions, that will generate surplus. But to answer the specific question of were there funds available to purchase or to roll out the air quality monitoring program, they were not at the time that we were presented with that question.
So, I actually am thinking of going forward, how much, when we are thinking about what would be beneficial to the community, from the safety of the community, local community, I'm trying to think of what sort of context to put that in. And if you can give us some sort of number, certainly, there were some, okay, thank you.
We can, when we come back to the council on this particular issue, we could do sort of a mid-agreement, check in and look at where we are relative to our assumptions and how we sort of anticipate cash flow, so that that can be considered. If I understand the question correctly, Councilmember Nash, you're correct that there is a structural, it appears based on our early estimates and on our actual experience, that there is a structural, or there may be a structural surplus that then could be used for other safety measures or safety projects identified by council. Staff will just, I quantify that and confirm it, so then the council can move forward with that.
So, if it is possible to get that earlier, certainly, I would base my list upon what the general amount is. And so, it would be beneficial to get that earlier as soon as, well, whenever we get it is when I would be able to really pull together a list, let me put it that way.
Sure. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, we're targeting returning to council on August 11 with sort of the next steps on these particular direction that we're getting tonight. We will have it prior to that and send it to the council for your review.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Silver?
Yes, not to overcomplicate this issue, but I have heard some suggestions about perhaps reallocating or redeploying the CRT. If we were to, say, reallocate them citywide, we would have to assess whether the use of the Facebook funds would be appropriate in that situation, because they did anticipate a local use in the Facebook area and not necessarily a citywide use, although, you know, it would be up to the council if they could make a finding that citywide deployment would benefit the local area, you could do that. So, I just wanted to raise that as a secondary issue. And I assume you will be discussing that in your continued discussion about, on this item later.
Thank you, Ms. Silver. I wanted to follow up on the discussion around the air quality monitors, and it came up in the public comment. I also brought it up at the Tuesday meeting. And just to give a little history, that I asked about a year ago, in June of 2019, to use some of the Facebook funds to pay for the air quality monitors in District One, specifically the Bellhaven neighborhood. I was told no, that the money was spoken for. And so, that's where the original discussion about the air quality monitors started. Since then, there was a, San Mateo County Labs provided a grant. And so, fast forward to today, those monitors will be installed, I don't, sometime, if not this month, definitely next month. But that's where the beginning conversation around the air quality monitors, because if this is for safety for the community, I believe funds could have been used for it. So. Councilmember Nash?
I just wanted to add that I believe that was during the fires, when there was really poor air quality.
So, okay. Are there any other follow-up questions or comments from Councilmember Nash?
Hi. So, this sort of leads into something that I thought we might be discussing tonight, and I'm wondering, it's fine that we're not discussing it tonight, but when we might. And that's, for example, the idea of the BEATs. And if, how many BEATs we have, presumably, that's in large part of police department and city manager decisions, but it certainly seems that council could provide some input into it. And then, in addition, I was also wondering, our chief chaplain, who man brought up the SMART, the San Mateo County Mental Health Assessment and Referral Team, which was not mentioned at all in the staff report. And so, I was wondering if that's something, how we can take advantage of that team that's there. And so, and then just generally, some of the pieces of the staff report, I did have comments on, questions on, which I don't think we should be doing now, but I'm wondering when we might revisit this.
Well, I think our bottom line message was, you know, we can only do so much. And so, we can stretch ourselves really thin and do baby step progress, or we can try and consolidate the progress we're making. So, I mean, that's up to the council. If you would rather take a broad brush, I was hoping that we could just start with a couple of, you know, the training and the chief recruitment and make progress on that. So, once those things have been accomplished, or maybe before that, we can come back to the council. And as part of the council's priority setting, you could certainly rejigger. But to your earlier point, or your first point about BEATs, I mean, the formation of the BEATs is entirely an operational issue. Now, we're, and we do need to look at that with the number of layoffs that the council authorized, but, and we're glad to share that information with you and how we got to those conclusions. But that will not be in the next week or so.
Councilmember Mueller, and then Councilmember Nash?
I didn't, I realize we're getting close to moving on, and before we did, I just wanted to share, though it's not pertinent to share this evening, something that is a document that I think that'll be useful after we've all gone through the training and we're starting to take our knowledge and apply it, and apply it to our work. And that's that last week, the Mayor Taylor and some others were very kind enough to join me in a panel to discuss racism. But coming out of that panel, Dr. Terry Givens, who's the former provost of Menlo College, actually forwarded a document as a checklist to be considered when making decisions, to make sure that you're checking the boxes and going through an analysis on equity as a tool that I could use. And so, I'll share that with my colleagues and with the city manager as something to add to our arsenal of materials. But, and I could have done that without mentioning it, but I'm grateful to Dr. Givens for providing that information and wanted to make sure I recognized her for doing so in the meeting this evening.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, I wanted to follow up on Councilmember Nash's line of inquiry, in a way of which I think the city manager alluded to, but didn't probably address as directly as it could have been addressed. And that is, is that with possible future attrition and with police officer layoffs, the actual sort of, you know, constitution of that fourth beat going forward may not be what it has been in the past, right? And so, I think what she is saying is that, like, there are changes that are coming, personnel that have already happened. And that, so, I think that the organization needs to work out that impact, but in many ways, it may be the scenario in the very near future that that beat can't be sort of, you know, can't be staffed in a way that it has been in the past. Definitely, city manager, correct me if I've said something inaccurate, but I want to be, because I think you said it a little bit more delicately, then I think it should be out there, it should be quite clear that, again, the staffing levels of the police department are lower than they were, are lower than they have in recent history, and lower than they have been in sort of, in an assumption of that fourth beat being fully staffed. And so, but I, as you know, Councilmember Nash, share very much your concern on the concentration of police resources in a specific section of the city. And so, and so, I share that and I am sort of, but I do think that this other element is important to take into when we sort of, you know, think about what is the timeline for addressing this.
Well, and I'm hopeful, if I may say, that the new interim chief will come in with fresh eyes and fresh experience and help us evaluate that. And in addition to that, I'd like to add that I met with two of our officers this week, Sergeant Brackett and Officer, gosh, no, Chris Dare. And, you know, I'll tell you that they really gave me hope. They care so much about our department, and they really want to be part of the solution. And so, I just hats off to them. They're very passionate about the city of Menlo Park, the community of Menlo Park, and I look forward to working with them on this project and how we can just utilize our police department within the city.
Councilmember Nash?
So, I just want to say, yes, thank you for all the comments, and I also have heard, have had discussions about the police staffing. Where I'm coming from is, I, as probably as obvious, love data. And so, I've been digging into some of the police crime by beat comparison and found in fact that BEATs one and two have more crime in each of them than BEATs three and four combined. And that's been for, well, I looked at 2017, 18, 19, and 20 year to date. And so, the fact that we have two BEATs in one area that is, actually has less crime, including violent crime, than in the other areas is just something that I think is worth discussing. And just the crime statistics in general didn't, not all of them, I would love to have a discussion at some point, and I could also do this offline, with the police chief, because I'm having a little bit of trouble making sense of some of the data between reports and all. So, that's where I'm coming from, is that I think that some of this information is worth discussing, because there is a lot of, there's quite a bit of information there. And then, the other piece which hasn't been addressed yet is just whether, well, just sort of a discussion of how we can use the SMART, the, oh, I just lost it, but the San Mateo, the group that's within the county that may be able to actually do a little, some of, could be utilized in a way that might be beneficial as we think about policing in the future. And since I had not heard of it before, Chief Chapel Hellman's email to CCIN, I was curious whether or not we have any relationship with them and how, you know, if that, how we think about that. Not wanting to get into it now, but I would like to discuss it at some point in the future, because it seemed like it was prominent from a fire department perspective and is completely missing in the staff report, which in other ways was extremely thorough. So, I just, I wanted to, it seems like an interesting resource that might be very beneficial. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Nash. And I am sure that the discussion around our public safety community and, and especially anything related to, I think that team dealt with both mental health and also if you're, if you're in crisis. And I think also any type of substance dependency as well. But a, a great resource. So thank you, Chief Chapel Hellman, for sharing that information with us. And I'm actually glad that we bifurcated the discussion to some degree. I know that there is a lot more that we can talk about. I believe that it's important to get an interim on board before we have a broader discussion around the operations, our budget, and any concerns that we have, and any other concerns. I think it's important to, to get an interim on board first because that's who would be implementing some of that change. And on that note, I'm not, Vice Mayor Combs.
Yeah, one last thing on that point. I just wanted to sort of thank the city manager for sharing about her meeting with, with the officers. And just say that from my perspective, I very much, again, yeah, the interim chief of police is someone who played key role. This is very much a discussion and a dialogue that I want the rank and file officers feel that they can engage with and that, that they have an important voice in it. And I certainly don't want them to think that they are being talked at. I think this is a discussion where we very much want to hear and learn from them as, as part of this process. And so, so again, I would echo what the city manager said. Thank them for, for being involved and engaging, and I thank her for sharing with us about that meeting.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. So at, at this moment, so have we concluded this topic F2 for the moment? And we've given our city manager direction. And at this time, we will move on to the next agenda item. And I believe that item is F3, regular business to review and possibly modify the urgency ordinance temporarily closing Santa Cruz Avenue and creating temporary outdoor use permit. To introduce this item is our management analyst, Mr. John Passman. And you are on mute. While we wait for Mr. Passman, I just wanted to check to see if the council received the email from Ms. Chow. She sent the slides ahead of time. Mr. Passman, while you figure out the technical challenges around mute, do you mind if we take a five minute break? Okay, I'll see you all in five minutes.
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to test it out, see if you could hear me now.
Yes, I can.
Okay, that's great, awesome.
Thank you, Mr. Passman. Welcome back, Mayor Taylor, Vice Mayor Combs, members of the city council. With all present, we can resume the meeting. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Heron. Mr. Passman, we're ready for your presentation.
I thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening. Once I get the presentation up, we can go ahead and start. So, once again, I apologize for the technical issue. But good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers. So tonight, I'm going to, this is John Passan with the Housing and Economic Development Division. And tonight, I'm going to give you a presentation that's going to give you a quick review and understanding of how the Santa Cruz Avenue closure and temporary outdoor use permit pilot program has been going up to this point. And then also present to you a modification proposed recently by the Chamber of Commerce and a couple of other options identified by the, by city staff. So a quick background on this item. If you remember, on June 16th, this item came before you. It was the original Chamber of Commerce proposal. The city council gave us direction at that meeting to draft an ordinance that would close down the street in a configuration similar to what the Chamber of Commerce proposed at that time, produce a streamlined permit, which is our temporary outdoor use permit for the usage of outdoor space. And then be sure to waive all fees associated with the permit. And what we originally were outlined was a 90 day pilot with a check in at around the 45 day mark. Obviously, this, this check in or review is, is a little bit earlier than the 45 days, and a little bit under 30. But with the feedback that we received and the proposal of a, of a modification, it is an appropriate time to probably take a look at how the, the program has been proceeding. So on, on June 19th, the urgency ordinance was adopted. And as I just mentioned, the Chamber of Commerce has just made a proposal back on July 9th for some modifications to the current closure on Santa Cruz Avenue. And it would just be a targeted reopening of some one way, one way lane traffic, which I'll detail later in the presentation. So just to review sort of how the program has been going on sort of a macro level, the city has received fairly strong interest in, in the temporary outdoor use permits. 13 total applications. Do have to note that two of those applications are, are incomplete, so not fully submitted. However, we are working with those businesses and all, all the businesses that have put in applications to get them through the process as smoothly as possible. So, so as outlined in the staff report, that four of those 13 are retail, are retail uses, and nine are dining, and just one of those dining, or a restaurant, is outside of the downtown core. So there hasn't been necessarily as strong interest outside the downtown area as there has been in downtown. So the costs associated with the closure to date, I'd like to point out and make sure it's clear that this is just the sort of monetary costs. Obviously, there, this has been a high priority project and a lot of staff time has gone into it. A lot of staff time has been involved with moving the barricades, putting the barricades down, and making sure that we're getting people through the process, that fees are waived, waived through the permitting process. So there certainly has been a high priority placed on it and a lot of staff time associated with it. But the monetary costs have, have come in around 22, 500 for the barricades. So the Menlo Park Fire Protection District obviously was, was kind enough to provide on temporary loan, sort of their, their concrete K rail that has been placed to close off the majority of the sections of Santa Cruz. So the city did have to go out and get some additional K rail on, on loan for a cost to close off some of the parking areas that are, that have been used for the temporary outdoor dining or retail uses. So also from council direct, direction, there was, we did procure some, some plants and trees for the downtown. Near the closures is about $5,000. The trees will all be replanted in parks around the city following the end of the pilot program. So while I think that the applications for the temporary outdoor use permits has definitely shown that there is enthusiasm for the program, there has also been a certain amount of negative feedback and definitely some concerns raised about how, how the program has, has proceeded. And frankly, it's, it's, it's a, and as we sort of knew going into this, there is a little bit of a dichotomy going on with, with interest. And retail businesses have, have expressed some, some reservations about the way the closure has proceeded and how it's affecting their business. So we've heard a lot about a lost volume. And that is, is probably, you know, a result of the fact that pedestrian traffic hasn't really picked up to replace or offset sort of the vehicular track, traffic we would see previously in downtown Santa Cruz. And then due to some, some particularly large vacancies downtown and the inability of applicants to use the traffic lanes for a temporary outdoor use permit has created some areas and closures that do have a sort of empty feel. So that's sort of the, the feedback we've received so far in a review of the program. Here's, want us to go and start. So this program definitely has sort of the two prongs, the, the, the street closure being one major portion of it and the other being the temporary outdoor use permit. So it will start with sort of modifications that could be, could be, that the city council could decide on if they so choose. So option one would be the, the Chamber of Commerce proposal that we received on July 9th. And this would modify the street closure to reopen some of the one way lanes. And you'll see later, there'll be an illustration of sort of what this looks like. But it's, it'll be southbound from Doyle to Curtis and northbound from Crane to Chestnut. And then there's option two, and really the, the staff recommendation is, is for no change at this point. The, there are some concerns about the, the traffic pattern that would result from, from the chamber, chamber's proposal and also the constant changing of, of traffic patterns may cause a certain amount of confusion for drivers downtown and may present a hazard. But it's also important to point out that, that we haven't even crossed the 30 day mark on this, this current modification. And then option three is also what might be a good compromise between sort of dining interests or restaurant interests and, and retail interests would be a potential reopening of all traffic lanes on Santa Cruz Avenue. But in this scenario, we could retain the closed on-street parking. And so the, since the temporary outdoor use permit up to this point is really, it has been limited to only parking or sidewalks for use of the public right of way, reopening the traffic lanes would not revoke anyone's current outdoor use. Everyone that has, has a permit or is using the outdoor, or using the, the or using the program appropriately would not be affected by this. But the, it would allow vehicle traffic to return to downtown, which has been a big concern of retailers. And in this scenario, there's also the potential to reopen certain parking spots on each block for customers that may need sort of that easier access provided by Santa Cruz Avenue, which is, so we have heard some concerns from some businesses such as Walgreens that their customer base may be, you know, more of an elderly a customer that may have difficulty coming in from the parking plaza. So, they would, and they would prefer to have the ability for parking in front of their store. So, I'm going to walk you through sort of the diagrams here. Option three, which is the option to reopen traffic lanes on Santa Cruz, all those traffic lanes, but maintain a closure of parking isn't depicted. But I can definitely, if there's any questions about that, we can walk through that. But it's, it should be fairly straightforward. It would return the flow of Santa Cruz Avenue to sort of its previous form, but parking would still be limited. So, on the left, there's the option two, the current closure, how Santa Cruz is currently set up and the blocked portions of the street. And on the right is option one, which is the chamber's modified proposal. So, as you can see, the key difference here is, on the right side, the chamber is proposing the opening of a one-way lane of traffic between Doyle and Curtis. And then between Chestnut and Crane, there would be a one-way northbound lane of traffic. And then the final closed block would remain the same. So, that's, those are some of the options identified for modifications to the street closure. The other component of the program, which is the temporary outdoor use permit, could also, the City Council could also consider making some modifications there as well. So, while the current ordinance, urgency ordinance is, limits the the uses for temporary outdoor use permits to retail and dining, we have received some limited interest from other uses that the City Council could consider including into the program, such as personal services and fitness. And then permitting, so this is a potential way to address some of the deserted or empty feeling that some people have noticed on the Santa Cruz closures. And obviously, this would be dependent on there being sufficient demand for permits in these areas and also dependent on the council choosing to continue to close some traffic lanes. But if those conditions are appropriate, then there is the ability to maybe permit the use of additional public right-of-way in the traffic lanes instead of the limitations that we currently have to only sidewalks and parking spaces. So, there's sort of the potential actions that before the City Council, and obviously, City Council has the ability to sort of mix and match and craft its own option. But the ones identified by staff is option one, which is the reopen some lanes of travel, which is in accordance with what the chamber has proposed. Option two, the staff recommendation, which is to maintain the current closure configuration at this time. And then option three, which is to reopen all lanes of travel on Santa Cruz while maintaining closure of the majority of on-street parking. And then sort of a side action on the temporary outdoor use permit side of the program would be to either expand allowed uses and/or locations for the permits. So, that's my presentation, and I will stand by for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Passman, for your presentation. Councilmember Mueller.
Questions for the city attorney? And that is, if we were to pursue option one, would the city still have design immunity?
Thank you, Cara Silver, city attorney. You would have, in order to retain your design immunity, you would have to adopt the plan that's submitted by the chamber via an amendment to the ordinance.
Okay. I don't have any further questions, so I'll pass to my colleagues. And then when we get to comments, Madam Mayor, I'll have more to say.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Nash?
So, I believe that several, in the staff report, it said that several businesses had inquired about the expanded allowed uses if we were to allow more temporary outdoor use permits for additional uses. And I was wondering if staff could let us know where that might be located or if it was in a specific section, or just would they be using any section that was available?
Hi, Councilmember Nash. So, if I think I'm answering the question, for example, the most recent request would have been in one of the parking plazas, so it's still mainly centered on the downtown core. But it was a personal trainer, a fitness studio that was, that had mentioned that they did have customers that were not going to come back unless they had the ability to do their business outside. They weren't going to come back to an indoor personal training studio. So, in that case, it was something that they considered crucial to their business, which is why they brought it up. But the location was the downtown, and they were interested in a couple of spaces in one of the parking plazas.
So, are we talking about, when I read the report, I thought that we were actually talking about using space that was already closed for these businesses as opposed to closing additional parking in the back in one of the plazas. Could you clarify whether that is, and then whether or not they would be, given that we've got the three sections, would they have, if they would go into one of the places on Santa Cruz Avenue that's closed off, would it matter which one of those sections, or did you not have that conversation?
So, under the temporary outdoor use permit process, there is the ability for businesses to use parking plaza, parking spaces currently. So, dining or retail, it's just the limitation on this particular request was the use, not the location.
Thank you.
If there aren't any other follow-up questions for the, for staff, we can go to public comment.
Mayor Taylor, I just wanted to let you know that City Councilmember Carlton was able to join us this evening. I don't believe she has a webcam, but she does have her microphone. So, if you want to check with her on questions for this item, we can.
And she's been with us since the beginning of the presentation.
Councilmember Carlton, can you tell us approximately what time you joined?
Hold on just one moment.
Looks like you're unmuted now. Perfect. Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Great. I don't think I saw the entire presentation, but I joined towards the beginning.
Thank you. Councilmember Carlton, do you have any follow-up questions for staff?
I think I've heard the same feedback that we've all heard, that a lot of the shop owners are concerned that they feel that the street closures are negatively impacting their business. And it's finding that balance between, I've had people suggest, can we open up part of the street to make it more accessible to people on bicycles? Can we open it up so that cars can go one way? And to be honest, I'm not an expert on the area, but I don't know what the correct solution is. But I do know that I'm hearing pretty consistently from people that own businesses other than restaurants that they feel that the street closures are negatively impacting their business. And so, I'm interested in hearing my colleagues' thoughts on the best way to address that.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. At this time, we were going to take public comment. Ms. Heron, how many speakers do we have?
So, at this time, I will ask any member of the public who wishes to speak on our current item, which is F3, update in consideration of modifications to the downtown street closure and temporary outdoor permit pilot program. To engage that hand feature on the top right side of your screen, will have the opportunity to unmute your mic, and you can address the City Council. At this time, I'm seeing only one hand raised. I will open up Fran Dean's mic in just a moment. So, again, if anyone wishes to speak, please engage that hand feature on the top right side. And Fran, if you want to unmute yourself, you can address the City Council at this time.
Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity to speak on the topic. I do want to start off acknowledging and giving a tremendous thank you to everyone on city staff. They're actually the core of the implementation team, and they've done a marvelous job, whether it's in permitting or public works in the actual street design. It's really great. It's fantastic. Like our peer cities along the peninsula, we tried to identify an optimal solution to reboot the downtown businesses. And we know each city has a unique model. It ranges from full-street closure seven days a week to a no-closure model. Also, is noted that multiple cities have modified their original design prior to or after implementation. In fact, one city has since modified that program twice. Based on business response to the temporary outdoor use permit application, we now have substantive information on which businesses will actually move forward or have moved forward with outdoor expansion. The current street map favored closure in areas with significant numbers of food service businesses or those most likely to take advantage of the program. It is working for restaurants. However, retail response has been different. And for that reason, we have forwarded our recommendation to propose revision to the current plan, which is included in the staff report that Mr. Passman went through, suggests two different areas or directional lanes to be open to traffic. The first, as he mentioned, is the northbound area from Doyle extending through Chestnut, and the second, the southbound from Crane to Chestnut. There are no applications, whether they're restaurant, retail, or service, for temporary outdoor use permits in these two areas. And that is why we are recommending the change. This change will replenish some of the on-street parking for retail and services. It will aid retail walk-in trade, and it will mask the growing number of vacancies and prevent more of a vacuum, as indicated by Mr. Passman. We have reviewed the staff report on the downtown street closure for tonight's council meeting. And although we understand that the staff recommendation is no change, we appreciate the opportunity for council to review our suggested modification. As each city is testing their approach for restaurant-retail reactivation from the pandemic, we believe that testing and optimization provide a process toward best solution. Our recommendation for modification of the current closure mapping was submitted specifically with that in mind. The pandemic presents ongoing challenges accompanied by changes in operational sites, the latest of which prohibits now in-restaurant dining. Social distancing remains a fundamental tenet of the proposed modification. Since medians, sorry, I've got a train going by. Okay. Since medians run the length of the area in question, we do not believe that it encourages confusion for the motorists and therefore encourage a stepped modification to the initial plan. In other words, option one is what we hope that you will review with everything in mind that I've mentioned ahead of time. And again, we really thank staff for all the work they're doing and certainly for council for your review of this. All of those three options before you are valid. The most important thing is to do the right thing for the city, for the businesses, and maintain social distancing. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Fran. At this time, I see no further hands raised. Mayor Taylor, you may continue with the meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Heron, and thank you, Ms. Dean, for your public comment. I went back to look at what was posted on CCN, and the most recent was from the owner of the eyewear saying to choose option three. And since I have not walked downtown, I'm only just curious, Councilmember Nash and Councilmember Mueller, you're on the subcommittee, what your thoughts are on this?
So, um, thank you. So, I think it's a really tough call, very honestly. Actually, I would not go with number three. I would not take everything out. I think that we should proceed with this pilot and see it out to the end and see how it goes. But right now, whether or not we should open up some of the lanes as a partial opening, as recommended by the chamber, or whether we should continue with the pilot as-is, as recommended by staff, to me is a really tough call. One of the things that makes it so tough is, as you're talking about, the eyewear business actually is not covered by the closure. They are on a corner right across from Wells Fargo, across from La Boulogne. And they do not have any closures on any sides of them. There is one sort of catty corner diagonally, but there's plenty of parking. There's vacant buildings next to them so that the parking is not, there's no competition for the parking. And unfortunately, when I've been down there, there has been plenty of parking in front, on the sides, and in back. So, what I think unfortunately is happening is the effects of the pandemic are basically hitting our retail really hard, as well as our restaurants, but especially the retail. People are staying home, and they aren't spending money. And that's both for economic concerns and also when people aren't socializing. They don't need new furniture, clothes, some of the other extras that they might normally be able to do, assuming that they are not hit hard by the economics right now and would still be able to, would still want to do that. But essentially, there's just so many different factors that are hitting our retail. So, that I personally don't, I don't think that it's going to make a huge difference whether or not we open up the street. So, I'm trying to weigh the staff's recommendation that it's, people will be further confused, and it will hurt the ability to adequately assess the pilot program with the thought that if the retailers think that it will help them, then we should, you know, let's do that. I guess one question that I have for staff is, if we go ahead and do modify the street and open up two of the lanes at this point, can we at some point go back to this current, how difficult is it to modify it one way? And then if, depending if there are conditions change, we decide to put it back the other way, how difficult is it to go back and forth is a question for staff, please?
There we go. I think Nikki's trying to get on it. She's the best person to answer this question.
Good evening, councilmembers. Sorry, I had to turn my light on so you could see me momentarily. So, I think in general, placement of the K-rail is actually quite difficult to move around, given that it's concrete and quite heavy. So, it is taking multiple days for our staff to position the K-rail along the different section of Santa Cruz. That said, depending on the magnitude of the changes, we're happy to help support testing the program however we can. But it is very staff-intensive to move things around. testing the program however we can, but it is very staff-intensive to move things around.
Thank you. I will have more comments later. Thank you.
Councilmember Mueller?
Yeah, so I have some thoughts along the same lines as Councilmember Nash. Councilmember Nash, I have to say, I always appreciate your attention to detail. So I, I don't believe that we're having a true pilot anymore. I think the conditions under which we contemplated this pilot have completely changed. And what we thought we were doing was we were creating a pilot for a period where there was outside dining, but we were either sort in a place where the conditions would stay the same or that they would actually move as they did for a very brief time period and incredibly quickly to more open, but it was very brief. And unfortunately, I think where we are now is that regardless of anything we do, we will be getting to option three, because I do believe that sooner than we probably expect, we're looking at a shelter-in-place order again coming down without outdoor dining. And so I think option three is, is in our future, unfortunately, unless something radically changes, but doesn't seem to be occurring. And then I agree with Councilmember Nash, because we are in this situation where the conditions for the pilot we're not really in anymore. And the, then we're headed, we're headed up, I guess, up the curve is the appropriate expression. People are staying home more and are more reticent to go out. And so option two is when people see a lack of business, they're gonna, they're gonna blame what's happening in front of them, and that's, that's option, that's option two. So, and candidly, I think it's a fair assessment to say that we expected that people would be going downtown and be looking to be downtown when we put this together. And option two is a way to sort of maximize that safely. Now we see a situation we're in that our retail businesses are desperate to bring people into their shops. And so I actually do trust the chamber's interpretation of what to do with that being option one. And I asked about the designing immunity because I think that's important to know. If we go forward with that, will we have that? I actually understand our staff believes it would be safer an option two, but I, I don't think they would even allow us to consider option one if it were reckless. And so, and it hasn't been taken off the table. We haven't been told no on it. So I actually would favor going forward with option one. But I do think option three is coming sooner than we think. So, that being said, I think we also need to understand, we also need to look at that. There have been some really wonderful things that happened during this pilot period. What's happening with, in front of Bistro Vita and some of other, or in front of Ans and some other places downtown is really wonderful. And what we see and the idea that we have others who want to use the space and program it but haven't been able to is wonderful. That's the vitality that we are looking for. Just so happens it's happening now at a time when the curve is going up the curve. But I think that there will be a time to look at this again. And so what, if we do reach option three, I think that we need to look at this as sort of evolve the way that the chambers discussed it and the way Councilmember Nash discussed it as an evolving landscape to conditions downtown. And so we can have a really good sample set of what it's like within one of those conditions for a prolonged period of time such that we understand it, because we're still learning from it. So, and we really are trying to do this to help the businesses, and I believe this has helped our restaurants. So the question is, can you find that perfect mix in a, in a, in a time period where people are starting to go downtown again to bring safe shopping and dining to, to our customers and to our businesses? So that was a long way of saying, and I apologize because I know the hour's getting late, I support option two. Oh, and I, and I do support expanding the uses to, expanding the uses for the fourth question.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Combs?
Yeah, just so I'm clear, Councilmember Mueller, so you, you support keeping it the same or adopting the Chamber of Commerce recommendation?
I apologize. I probably said that. I support option one, the Chamber of Commerce recommendation. So I support option one. I realize we probably headed toward option three. I support option one. Sorry for using that.
No, no, totally fair. So I am also in support of option one. Again, I appreciate, I think the staff's concerned, and it is completely valid, that sort of the changing after not a very long period of time with this current formation, I think would sort of certainly add to confusion and some of the other concerns. But, you know, sort of built into this project is the idea that there was some ability for variability, right, that you could, you could change it. Again, they're not, it's not easy to change, but, but they are, they're concrete, right? They're not bolted to the, to the ground. And so, and, and because what I'm seeing is that the pilot as it currently, you know, exists, is going to fail, right? It's going to be a failure because a key stakeholder, a key constituency, which is like the retailers on Santa Cruz, have uniformly come out against it. And so like, and so there's no way that like it can, we can end this in its current state and say that this is a success, because unless there's some dramatic change in something, because again, like I said, a key stakeholder has already uniformly come out and said that like it is not working for them. Right? And so then I think the onus is on us to see that, is there something we can find that works for them? And, and so I think what the, what the chamber has, has presented is, is a, is an ability of a middle ground. So it's not saying that let's like totally sort of, let's, let's totally give up this, this, this project, but let's look at some ways of which we can, we can sort of, you know, respond to the concerns and to the anger, right, of key stakeholders. And I think, you know, Councilmember Nash and Councilmember Mueller make very valid points, right? The issue is not the, very much when it comes to the lack of business activity. The issue is not the street closure. I think we can all appreciate that, right? It is other things, but nonetheless, right, the business owners downtown see it as that. And, and again, like I'm not the one standing in the store not seeing people come in. And so like, you know, so I do have to appreciate that they're, they're looking at it from a different perspective and a perspective of greater vulnerability, right, and exposure than I am. And so in that sense, again, like I said, I know the chamber has engaged them, and they've offered this as a middle way. And again, I think the only way that we can sort of try to see if there is some, some success, right, in closing off some aspects of, of, of Santa Cruz to allow for greater social distancing and other, other, other things is to try to look at some option that, that maybe some of the business owners can, can support. And so again, again, that's why I'm supportive of, of going with, with the council, with the Chamber of Commerce recommended option.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Combs. And I just got a notification from Ms. Heron that we had one more person that wanted to make a public comment. So I'm gonna take that at this moment.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor, and members of the city council. So at this time, we have one hand raised, and it's Basile Oroz. You are off mute and able to address the city council at this time. Basile, would you like to provide your public comment? Wonderful. Go right ahead.
Can you hear me? Okay. This is Basile Oroz. I am the owner of Ace Hardware. And of course, when the street closure was announced, I, we are doing very well. And I said, okay, it won't help retailers, but let's let everybody have a piece of opportunity. And we like, because if we don't have anybody enjoying the success, it's not fair. And we, there were not, no comment at that time, but after the street closure happened, just get, of course, we lost up to 30% of the sales, which we can afford. But the problem is other tenants and other businesses like the 50th Avenue Salon, they lost like 80% of the sales. And it's a rug store which lost like 90% of the, because I believe, we do have a lot of customers which they wanna, they, they don't live right here. They live in Aterton or they live in nearby cities. And just, they get confused with this street closure. And we get at least 10 phone calls a day asking, where can we park? Do you have any parking? Because the streets are closed. And they have options. They can drive to Edward City. Now they open a hardware store. They're large. And park and shop. This, this is related to our business, but related to every other retail, you know? It is a ghost town. I understand in the evening, few restaurants they enjoy, and I enjoy to walk up there, but during the day, it's just a ghost town. Up to 5 o'clock, it's just, it's a few kids with a bike. But the businesses are suffering, and everyone I talk to, they are suffering. Now, we can, we can try to open partially, but in the end, I think in the end, it has to be open because it will help the restaurants also. A lot, they don't have walk-in customers anymore. In the evening, yes, they do have more customers, but they need lunch also. They need, during the day, also they need customers. And it's, it's not about one business. It's about all of them. And I think everybody should speak, and they feel it, they feel it the most, you know? I, I'm fine. We can, we are doing very well. And, but just seeing this drop, I'm thinking of other businesses. If they suffer the same, it's not good.
Thank you for your public comment. Mayor Taylor, you may resume. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy, and I thank you, Ms. Heron, and I appreciate the, the public comment. You're absolutely correct that it is about all the businesses downtown. So which is good. We have the, the opportunity to make some adjustments. And I just wanted to check with Councilmember Carlton to see if she had any input.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I pretty much heard universally unhappiness with the closure with regard to the businesses downtown. And I have to say, my guess is that it's a combination of things. It's, it's partly the closure. It's partly COVID. It's partly people just not wanting to go out and buy carpets and eyeglasses and needlepoint and the things that we normally used to go out and buy. I went out for bagels. It took me an extra five or 10 minutes to figure out how to actually get to the bagel shop. But I really wanted bagels, so I figured it out. I think most people, it is something that you go through to figure out how to get there, but it's, it's not a Herculean task to figure out. But it is off-putting. And I'm super passionate about trying to keep our small businesses. Our downtown isn't full of the, the national chains. We know the people that own these stores. They're, they're wonderful people. They're local people who have their lives in these stores. And I personally am willing to bend over backwards and do whatever it takes to support them. And it disturbs me greatly how much they're struggling. And so I think that what we have isn't working. I'm completely open to trying what the Chamber of Commerce has suggested. I hope that that will work better. I hope that people will find that works. I do think that my colleagues are correct, that we may be moving towards three in the future for various and sundry reasons. But I'm completely open to trying something new to see if that is able to provide an open, safe space for people to eat outside. And yet, the, the footpath, bike path to get through that might support the other businesses as well. So I'm, I'm open to trying it, and we'll, we'll see what happens from then. If we do, what I would like to say is, what is the time period when we're going to come back and say whether or not the Chamber of Commerce suggestion worked or didn't work? And also, I would like to know the considerations for safety that was brought up by the letter from Fire Chief Shaplehman, and if that's been addressed as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. And as, as far as the letter, we haven't discussed that safety issue specifically. And, and Mr. Passman, I don't remember if that was a part of the presentation at all, but I just wanted to check. Was that?
Hi, Mayor Taylor. No, it wasn't part of the presentation. And I believe the interim city attorney, Kara Silver, is most familiar with, with the, the issue with the Muppert Fire District.
Thank you. Ms. Silver, and I believe that, I'm not sure if this had to do with, Councilmember, Councilmember Mueller brought up the design immunity, but Councilmember Carlton wanted to address the letter from Chief Shaplehman.
So I didn't see a letter from him, because it's sent today.
I think yesterday. I'll have to look and see. Basically, he wanted indemnification. He's concerned about the impact on the emergency vehicles of having the blockages there.
So he wanted indemnification if we were to, I, I know that he has requested indemnification with respect to the use of the K-rail. But if he's also asking for indemnification for access for the emergency vehicles, I believe that we had had a discussion with him, and he had, he had said that the emergency vehicles could in fact pass through the, the configuration. I think we should probably have a second follow-up conversation to make sure that he is also comfortable with the chamber's revised plan. I would, I would think that the vehicles could still pass through with the one-way configuration, but we may need to double-check with, with the fire district on that issue.
Okay. I didn't have the letter in front of me because I was under the impression that you had received the letter. I'll make sure that you do have a copy.
Thank you.
And that was, actually, my only question was to find out if the fire district looked at the presentation before, just to give their thoughts on whichever options were different than the one that we already have.
Adam, I, I believe that the chief is attending, and I don't know if our city clerk can promote him so that he can speak. But he is texting me to say that he is okay with the proposal by the chamber, so.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Good to know.
And chief, I did promote you, so if you would like to address the city council, you may engage your webcam and microphone if you'd like to. Thank you.
Did you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, so thanks for, thanks for asking, but we're fine with whatever the chamber has proposed. Obviously, the K-rails and indemnification from our standpoint was, you know, kind of a small matter because they're loaned in case somebody drives into it, although I doubt that they'd be able to move it for us since they weigh 4,000 pounds each. But, you know, it was, it was obviously a significant safety factor for us to put that in there to make sure it was there. So, you know, having one side of the street- So, you know, having one side of the street is fine as long as, you know, the ends are blocked again. You know, the center divider has trees and a curb and so forth. So that offers some, some protection on a crossover, which is, you know, very rare that that's ever occurred at all. But we're fine with, you know, whatever, whatever works for the downtown business owners. And obviously Fran's done her due diligence again. We'll follow whatever, you know, whatever lead it is that you give us. And, and we'll help to make it work. That was the whole point to begin with. So that's where we are.
Thank you, Chief Shaplehman. Okay. And Councilmember Nash?
I was going to go ahead and move that we approved the chamber's proposal.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Councilmember Nash, Councilmember Carlton. Just want to check in with interim city attorney Kara Silver because I do believe option one requires an ordinance update. And we're able to first read, second read, and amend at this meeting?
Yeah, so this is an urgency ordinance. And so we need a four-fist vote. And if we do get a four-fist vote, the ordinance can be amended without going through the normal first and second reading. However, I, we have been discussing offline how to best memorialize the design immunity. There are two options. One is to have a formal plan attached to the, to the ordinance. And that plan should show some barriers. And the current plan does not have those barriers laid out completely. So I'm not sure that this would satisfy that requirement. The second option would be to delegate the design authority or design immunity authority to the Works Director to, in connection with reviewing the plans. So unfortunately, we just won't be able to really resolve that issue. It looks like this, this evening. So what I would suggest is that we get offline. And then we could come back to you and, you know, at another hearing with, with an approved ordinance. I guess the second option is if we take a five-minute break, we could maybe dialogue on this issue and, and up. So whatever you prefer.
Thank you, Ms. Silver. Councilmember Mueller?
Mayor, I'm available tomorrow afternoon for, for, for a very quick hearing to vote on this, on an urgency ordinance. It sounds like we might be headed toward that direction. Could make myself available tomorrow afternoon for like, because it sounds like all we need is a vote on the, on the, on the urgency ordinance tomorrow. And I want to make sure, design immunity is very important that we get right.
Thank you, Councilmember Mueller. Councilmember Nash?
I was going to suggest, I'd like to suggest that we try a five-minute break now to see if we can actually figure this out so we don't have to meet tomorrow. And if that doesn't work, then we could do option two, which would be to try and meet tomorrow.
And actually, with a 24-hour hearing requirement, let's, let's hope that we can work it out in the five-minute break.
Okay. Five-minute break. Thank you.
Is council staying on, on this line during the five-minute break? Or how are we doing that?
We have to turn our cameras off and our mics off.
Correct. We can't use this venue for your five-minute break as we are in a live meeting. So our assistant city manager, Nick Pagaros, will you set up a call for the city council?
Is he going to email that to us or text us or?
That's what I want to find out before we all break.
I'm sorry, Judy. What's the request?
How are they going to be meeting for this brief five-minute break?
Judy, I don't think we're. The council is taking a break and staff is working during that break.
Sounds even better, guys. Thank you for the clarification. Welcome back, Mayor Vice Mayor, members of the city council. Just confirming that Councilmember Carlton is still on the line?
Yes, I'm here.
Wonderful, thank you. With the quorum returned, you may continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heron.
So Madam Mayor and members of the council, I was able to meet with Works Director and we were able to craft some language that I think accomplishes what you wanted to do. So what we would propose is to amend ordinance number 1070, which is attached as attachment A, I believe, to your staff report. And in section three of the, or actually in section two of the ordinance at the, at, on paragraph two, we would add a sentence that says, "Before issuing a temporary outdoor use permit, the design and plans shall be approved by the Public Works Director or designate." So what that would do is provide design immunity for any new restaurant or retail business that wants to locate on, on the street. The plans would have to be approved by the Public Works Director. The council in the ordinance is delegating that authority to the Public Works Director. You would receive design immunity. The second change we would propose to make is that in section three, as you know, the original ordinance closed off the entire street. So we would propose to substitute the chambers updated exhibit A, which adds some additional right of way and street use. And so we would attach exhibit A. And then to the end of section three, we would add the language, "The Public Works Director or designate shall have the authority to approve the final street closure plan and barrier placement." So the, the exhibit A that was submitted by the chamber did not have the precise locations of the barriers. And so we would want to have the Public Works Director review the location and approve the barriers again to, to gain that design immunity. The final issue that we talked about is we wanted a clarification on whether you wanted to open up the temporary outdoor use permit to personal services and fitness studios so that they could take advantage of this permit as well. And if you wanted to do that, what we would recommend is that in section two, the last sentence be amended to include personal services and fitness studios. So those are our suggested changes.
Thank you, Ms. Silver. I'm comfortable with it. Councilmember Nash?
You might be muted, Councilmember Nash.
Right, you are. So I'm wondering if we want to add something for the temporary outdoor use permit modifications such that if we are so fortunate as to have the parking lot become full, that we in fact can rescind those permits that were, are outside the main street zone earlier than the other permit. Does that make sense? Okay.
You can certainly add that language as well if you'd like. It's a good point.
Did anyone else on council have input on this, on the changes or the modifications? Councilmember Carlton?
No, I'm, my only question is, is I'm skeptical that this is going to work either. And I'm wondering when we're going to circle back to review its, its efficacy. Are we going to look at this in 30 days, 60 days?
Great question, Councilmember Carlton. Councilmember Nash?
So it's scheduled to have a review at 45 days. That's in the ordinance, I believe.
That's great. Thank you.
And the 45 days will start from the beginning, not from the date of these changes. Okay, thank you.
So do we have a motion? Motion by City Councilmember Nash to accept option one and amend urgency ordinance number 1070. Section two, paragraph two, adding language before issuing outdoor use permit in design and plans shall be approved by the Public Works Director or designate. Amending section three, substituting the chambers exhibit as exhibit A and adding the Public Works Director or designate authority to approve final street closure and barrier plan. Amending again section two, the last sentence, to include personal services and fitness studios and add language rescind, or add rescinding language for the personal services and fitness studios dependent on the parking. Do I have a second?
I'm trying everybody jump in there. If nobody will second it, I guess I will, although it's not my favorite option.
Thank you, Councilmember Carlton. So by roll call vote, Councilmember Carlton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mueller?
Yes.
Councilmember Nash?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Combs?
Yes.
And Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Heron. And we have one item left on the agenda, and that is informational. And I must take public comment. Ms. Heron, do we have any public comment on this item? And the informational is continued from Tuesday.
Correct. And so I'm trying to get it on the screen now. Of course, our last item is our most trickiest. What it is, it is item G1, City Council Agenda Topics for July 2020 through September 2020. If any member of the public has public comment on this item, please engage that hand feature on the top right side of your screen. We will have the opportunity to open your microphone and you can address the city council. I see no hands raised. Mayor Taylor, you may continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Did anyone on council have any input on the informational item as far as our agenda topics? Councilmember Carlton?
No.
Okay. I actually do, but I was going to wait until the council subcommittee reports. I thought it would be easier, but I'll go ahead now. Just a few things that I have some concerns on, and that is just outreach, residential outreach. So if we can put that on the agenda for a future agenda. The next is, and Councilmember Nash, you brought this up at our last meeting, and that is looking a little deeper into our business needs. What's happening with our business community in the city? The next is engaging our youth. There was, I believe, Councilmember Mueller, you directed us as far as creating a youth commission and considering the amount of interest that our youth have had in our political process, I think it's a great time to spearhead that, considering there's a lot of energy. And also COVID-19 testing. We have an area in our city that has a high population of Latinos and who are testing positive at a higher rate in our county. Our numbers are going up. They're not as high as other cities. But I am definitely interested in getting more information to community members about COVID-19 testing. I know that we have neighboring cities that are providing it. I'm not sure if Stanford still has their testing site in Menlo Park. But just how to get more outreach to communities and using the assumption that not everybody is using the internet and checking our websites and receiving our emails. And so just looking at what more can we do as a city? I know the county does some outreach already, but I'd like to see the city do a little